We call the meeting of the Reno Planning Commission to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Can we have roll call, please?
Dennis Romeo.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Kimberly Locke.
Here.
Paul Olivas.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
And Kevin Wysocki.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for a public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form. If you're speaking on something that's on the agenda at this time, please wait till that item comes forward. Do we have any public comment on something not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. I'll close item three on the agenda. Item four, approval of the minutes for the December 6, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes for December 6? Hearing, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Commissioner Kaufman, so moved.
Commissioner Wysocki, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Yes. Jason Woosley for the record. Abstention?
For the record, Commissioner Woosley.
Paul Olivas.
And Commissioner Olivas are abstaining from voting. Approval of the meeting or minutes for the January 2, 2013 regular meeting? Do we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any abstentions on that?
Paul Olivas abstain.
Okay, the motion carries with one abstention. Item four, discussion and potential direction to staff regarding the changes to the 2013 Planning Commission's schedule. Who's handling that? Claudia?
Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. Michelle and I are handling that one. So we've, once again, we redistributed the calendar to you and we were seeing if there were any comments. We changed those two dates in July and next January and we're seeing if those dates work for the rest of the commission.
Okay, are there any comments on that item? Everyone happy? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Claudia.
Can you take a vote on that?
Do we need a vote?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the schedule?
Mr. Chairman, so move.
Commissioner Wysocki, a motion?
Commissioner Kaufman, second.
Commissioner Kaufman, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wysocki.
Personal thank you to staff for reviewing and redoing our agenda schedule for this year. Thank you very much.
And I will also, I will second that also. They did a great job. Okay, we're going to city council liaison report. Do we have?
We have no report. No report.
No report. Okay. Item seven, unfinished business or public hearings. Item one, voila, two variants, condition amendments. Let's go to disclosures before we get too far into this. Let's start on the far right.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wysocki, I have had a phone call conversation with the applicant's representative. I have had a meeting with one of the adjacent property owners and I've read an email from another property owner.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I met with the applicant's representative and I received an email.
Commissioner Woosley?
I've received the email as well.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I've received email.
Commissioner Locke?
None.
And I have had conversations with adjacent property owners and with the applicant's representative. I'm not sure how we want to proceed with this. Can we take just a minute here? I just would like to adjourn this meeting or call a recess for just a minute here. Is that acceptable to the commissioners? Before we get too far into this item, there are some concerns that I have and some of the fellow commissioners have with some issues here that I think we would like a little more time to get answers to. I would like to see this item, I would like to see the commission continue this item till the March 6, 2013 meeting so we can get some answers and clarification. Is there any other opinion or feeling of the commissioners on this item? I'd like to hear that.
If I could step in, Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager, if you could specify the reasons and what items you would like more information on, that would be helpful.
My particular issues are the handicap parking and parking in general and the compatibility issue with surrounding properties. I have yet to resolve that in my mind and I need more information to do that. I'm hoping that there's some other comment on this. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, Commissioner Stapleton, I am concerned about the number of times that we've continued this. I respect and understand your, the chair's interest in getting more info. Just, I think, is there anybody in the, in the public who's here tonight for this if we're going to continue it again?
We do have a number of comment sheets and so you will need to open the public hearing tonight?
We're not to that point. Look.
I know, I wasn't going to call them up. I just, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the number of times we've continued it and the fact that if the public
comes a number of times, I think that is, it's unfair and not good for the process.
Any other comments from the commission? Is there a motion, anything to follow up on?
Mr. Chairman, before continuance, I've got some questions that I would like to raise to the applicant's representative.
Absolutely.
So that if, if this commission tonight does agree to a continuation, that the applicant's representative will bring it back to us, bring the answers back to me anyways for my questions next month. Is there something that could take a little bit of research?
Okay. Any other comments by the commission? What's the feeling of the commission? Would you like to continue this for one more month? We would be initiating the continuance. So this would be the first continuance generated by the Planning Commission. The applicant has done it twice. So I think legally, are we within our purview to do this if we have unanswered questions?
Yes, you are.
This is Rob Boney with the City Attorney's Office and the commission does have the authority to continue this matter.
Okay. What's the feeling?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Woosley?
I know I could support the continuance of this, this project.
Okay. Commissioner Kaufman?
I'm in favor of the continuation, but should we have the presentations before, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I don't, well, obviously Fred has an opinion. Please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fred Turner, Community Development Director. Procedurally, and Claudia or Rob, feel free to jump in here. Procedurally, you should open up this public hearing. If people cannot attend a future date, then let them speak tonight.
And we will.
And be able to, but you need to open up that, that public hearing. And also, they'll have to obviously take a vote. If there is a continuance that you would want to occur, that, that vote be taken after the public hearing though. So I just want to focus that there's a lot of folks here today and I want to make sure that they have an opportunity to speak or if they can wait to the next date. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So what, what I would like to do is open the public, well, okay, what we can do is deal with the continuance. We'll open the public hearing. Let me see if procedurally we can do this. Open the public hearing, continue and ask for anyone that's here, present that can't make that meeting, if they would like to speak now on that issue for the record.
That would be the process, Mr. Chair. You would open the public hearing, invite people that cannot make the March 6 meeting to come and voice their comments, ask those that can make the March 6 meeting to hold their comments because the, the idea is to hear all the comments as close as you can to one meeting. And then you would take your, your vote at that point in time regarding the continuance.
Okay. Thank you. That being the case, I'm going to open the public hearing portion of this. I'm going to ask the applicant if they have, where is the applicant? If you have anything to say regarding this, if you agree or disagree with continuing it for clarification on certain issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Garrett Gordon with the Law Firm of Lewis and Roca, today representing the applicant for voila two. We would certainly be agreeable to 30 more days. I think the handicap access is important. I think the compatibility issues are important. I'm willing if Mr. Wysocki wants to put on the record any other issues I should try to deal with in the next 30 days. I would note, last time I was here, we, we continued the item on behalf of one of the neighbors who couldn't make the January date. So I would appreciate just to say in courtesy, give you my word, I'll continue to work with the neighbors and hopefully bring you back a, you know, hopefully a grand compromise on this application in 30 days. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And city, would you like to make a presentation now or?
I don't, I would recommend going to public comment.
All right. I'm going to go to public comment. Garrett, you're already there. Paul Selegi, would you be available for the March meeting or would you like to speak now?
I'm available in March.
Gary Kasdan?
I'm available.
In March. Rock?
Yes.
Okay. George?
Available in March.
Darren?
Yes, I should read that.
Available in March. Okay. Is there anyone else that's here tonight that would like to speak on this issue that will not be here, March the 6th? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing portion of it and bring it back to the board for comments and a possible motion. Any further comments by the board? Commissioner Stapleton?
I just have one comment about the, I do think it sort of hinders the process a little bit to keep continuing, but it looks like everybody that's here can come to the next meeting and if the other commissioners feel like they need more information, then I can support that.
Okay, can we have a motion? Commissioner Wysocki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of LDC 13-00026, voila, two variants, condition amendments, I move to continue this to our March meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Kimberly Locke, seconds.
Commissioner Locke, second.
Mr. Chair, could we please clarify? I know we've said at this Rob Boney with the City Attorney's Office that that will be March the 6th at 6 o'clock. I think that's been said, but if that could be part of the motion.
I amend my motion to be date specific of March 6, 2013.
Okay, and would you amend your second to reflect that?
Yes, I amend.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion before we vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would just like to express this to my fellow commissioners. Over the years, you guys know, I always support staff in majority of, of all the requests they have for, for them to do final reviews or to review certain documents that we ask the applicants to bring forward. In this case, there's several documents in here that I think it's our job as a Planning Commission to see and review these documents and/or plans rather than leaving them for staff because it's part of the conditions that we're finding. And for the applicant to bring forward a complete packet with documents and drawings for us to review. And if you guys don't agree with me on this tonight, that's fine. No harm, no foul. But there's, there's some things in here that I think we should see and as, as being able to make our findings or not being able to make our findings.
Is there any other comments on this before we vote? Commissioner Kaufman?
I guess I would direct it to Commissioner Wysocki. What specifically? I mean, let's line those out in this meeting then.
A site plan showing the proposed walkway landscaped areas. Yes, we see a revision to parking, but we still, there's, there's a condition in here for a record book for, for parking and parking violations on adjacent properties and, and just some things that I think that, you know, we're, they're asked, those are part of our conditions and if those are part of our conditions, we should see those documents.
Does that answer the question?
That answers.
Okay. And I just have one comment. This has been continued twice, I know. We're maybe going out of our way here to try to get all the facts, but this will be the last bite at the apple. So March 6th, neighbors and concerned citizens and applicant, please have all the information handy in, in advance so we can digest this thoroughly because one way or another, it'll get acted on, on the 6th of March. So having said that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero. We'll see you all back here in March and thank, thank you for coming down. I appreciate your participation in this. Okay, item eight, public hearings. LDC 13-00028, Jackson's Food Store, number third, or number 23, Red Rock Road. Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please step forward? You have 15 minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Lepre from Lepre Construction and next to me is Darren Lynch, my architect. On the screen right now today is the existing location of the convenience store that we would like to work on and expand the use. We've been working with staff. We met with the, with Ed and the Neighborhood Advisory Board. We dealt with their concerns. We've met with staff and changed the plans and I believe met all their concerns. The next plan you'll see is a site plan. It shows the location of the existing store and also the new C store. It shows the existing canopy and also the new truck filling, fueling canopy. Everyone has looked at it. We worked out all the small details. When we do the construction on this, we will keep the existing store operational. And then once we have the new store built, we'll move everything into the new store. We'll open that, the new store and then we'll tear down the, the old store and then tie in all the pieces. So we have a few elevations and a rendering. This is, if you stand there on the corner, this is the store behind the existing canopy and the new gas truck fueling canopy behind it. The next shows it from the other direction. Okay, let's go with that. And we have a couple of elevations for you also. We're here to answer any other questions that you have. So at this time, I, unless you have any questions, I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia, are you handling this for the city?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager. Staff agrees with the presentation and they were very cooperative and made a number of changes to help with the circulation and the site design. I attended the Neighborhood Advisory Board meeting and they seemed very favorable and we did receive one phone call in favor of the project and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. If you request to speak on this issue, please fill out a request to speak form with the clerk. I do have one form. Ed, would you care to come up? You have three minutes. It says you wish to make a statement.
For the record, Ed Hawkins, Ward 4, NAB, North Valleys. Back in August of 12, the Neighborhood Advisory Board met in O'Brien Middle School. Everybody was noticed in the area of the Shell Station. We had no adverse comments, no comments at all actually. None of the neighbors showed up for this, so I have to assume there was no opposition to this development. At that point in time, it was for an annexation from Washoe County into Reno. That was approved, then it went in for zoning, that was approved, now we're here in front of you for an SUP. My biggest concern was, and I called the mayor one morning when I received the package and I told him I don't want a truck stop here instead. However, after going over the plans with Mr. Lepre and the Jackson folks, looking at what they were willing to do to make it workable, they changed a few things. One, they put in eight parking spaces dedicated for carpooling in that area because that one area toward the north side was going to be taken away for driveway and come into the parking spaces for the diesel trucks. Another concern for the area was the, the smell of the diesel fumes while the motors ran at nighttime. I told them that wouldn't take place. The only thing that will be able to take place would be a refrigeration unit that is about 50 decibels, about the noise of a washing machine when it's going in your home. There's going to be three cameras mounted on the poles outside of where the truck parking's going to be allowed and they will be, the truck drivers will have to come inside, according to Frank, to register that their truck's parked inside the lot. And the reason why we're doing this is be, well, for me myself is, over the course of the last two or three years, I've noticed truck parking over by the old Scolari's, recently up by the new Walmart and down Military. These people come into town, they don't know where they're going to park so they can offload their cargo the next morning and this seems to be the best place to put it. I've had Scolari's area and Military signed. I've personally been up and talked with the manager at Walmart to prevent truck parking. The one thing I hate seeing is these urine bottles left behind by the truckers after they sleep the night in their cabovers. Anyway, I'd like you to approve this. We've, we've done away with all the truck parking in the North Valleys and this would be an excellent place so these gentlemen can park their trucks, make their deliveries in a timely fashion in the morning. And I think Mr. Lepre's come together with the NAB and satisfied all our questions and our concerns as well as making it a great design. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Now is the time. Hearing and seeing none. I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Do we have any disclosures on this item? I see none. Okay. We'll bring it back for questions and comments. Any questions? Commissioner Stapleton?
I just have one question, I think for staff, about the, so will trucks be allowed to idle or do they have to park? And is that written into the conditions?
There's an idling regu, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. I was just, and if so, does it meet, I don't know if this is true for this, but I know in residential adjacency, it has to be below 65 decibels. So just, what's the plan for that specifically?
Washoe County has an idling regulation that we can post on the site. Let me see, I'm not sure if we have that in there as a condition, but we can add that, sorry. We can add that if we don't have it in there as a condition.
I did, I saw the report from the RPD, the SEPTED, and that they suggested that there would be a sign placed regarding the idling and that in addition, the...
Condition six has prohibits, signs prohibiting, requires signs prohibiting engine idling. So that is in there as condition six.
And they suggested that it include the applicable violations from the RMC?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe it's, it's going to be RMC and there's Washoe County code as well.
Okay, so, okay.
We'll make sure that's all on there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Motion? Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wysocki?
In the case of LDC 13-00028, Jackson's Food Store, number 23, Red Rock Road, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I can second the motion. I also can make the findings.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero. Good luck with your project. Number two, LDC 13-00043, Reno Buick GMC Cadillac. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative here?
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of Reno Buick GMC Cadillac. Fairly simple request. That is a picture of the existing dealership on Kitsky Lane. It's been there about for almost 50 years. Essentially, this project is a remodel. There's only about 1,200 square feet being added to the building. That's how it looks today. That's the new facade that will be put onto the building. If you look at the windows in the back, that's the existing window line of the building, so we're just extending that out so there's covered display area. And then the building addition itself, if you see where the, the red car is parked there, that will, that's, you know, when you buy the car, you get, you can drive out of the dealership, the new vehicle delivery area, that's essentially just going to be enclosed within the existing building. So that's the only building expansion enclosed area other than the canopy. As you can see, the, the existing non-conforming signs will be brought into full compliance with current code. I did have one question about building, lighting. Right now, it's hard to see in this picture, I apologize, there are spotlights on the top of the building that shine and create some spillover. All those will be eliminated and then the rest of the lighting on the site will remain as is. So I think it's a great improvement to the neighborhood. We'll really kind of spruce up the appearance of the building, add some landscaping out along Kitsky Lane and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, before staff starts, disclosures please. I had a phone conversation with the applicant's representative.
Okay. Commissioner, no? I did get a notice on this to my house. I must be right at the very edge of the, of the boundary area, but I, I don't think it'll make any difference as to which way I'm going to vote on this.
Acting out of an abundance of caution, if you got a notice, you feel you can act fairly and impartially on this?
I absolutely do.
Okay, the, the issue that I'm having though is that may have an impact on your property value one way or the other. So I would recommend that you recuse yourself from this particular item since you did receive the notice in the mail because you are somehow within the area of the noticing.
And I will heed legal counsel's advice. Commissioner Woosley, would you like to take this over?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, can we call the applicant's representative? I'm sorry, we're at staff now. Sorry, you already just gave yours. Thank you. Vern, thank you.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. As indicated by the applicant, this is a minor addition to the dealership. It will not increase the intensity or density of what's going on on the site. In fact, it's an improvement to the architecture of the building. Staff is recommending approval. Subject to conditions, I just received one phone call from one of the owners of the houses to the southeast of the site and they were just interested in what was, what was being requested and they had no problems once I explained it to them. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open up public comment. I do have a request to form to speak from Bill Hans. Would you like to come up in every three minutes? Please state your name for the record.
I'm Bill Hans. I reside on Cordona Avenue, which is one block off of, off Kitsky. And the main concern, I stopped and, and looked at the property with Mr. Alexander, who's the general manager there. Our main concern was parking, lighting... Our main concern was parking, lighting, and any kind of speakers that are put out outside on the building to attract the salesman or whoever is calling. They, if you've been on that corner, the dealerships have all been wanting to do the fascia rehab and what have you, and it cuts down on parking. They don't want to block their new windows, or they don't want to do those things. It drives the employees back up into our neighborhood. And even with the Nissan dealer, the city came in and took out red zones, which we had approved with a previous dealer, so that these people could park. Now, he's the, I know this is not the Nissan dealer, but he was to provide onsite parking, and we may have to go to code enforcement for that. And that's what we're looking at here. Mr. Alexander showed me that the parking would be onsite for his employees and not drive it back. The other thing is that, I don't know if you have jurisdiction over the parking on Kitsky Lane, on all those dealerships. I think it's, since it's a state highway, it needs to have someone take a look at that, possibly the city, just because the dealerships don't want, after they've redone these buildings and everything, they don't want people parking in front of their buildings. So they have either redlined them, put signs up, and tell their employees, park someplace else. And at one point, we've been told, and like I say, we're one block off, we were told if we didn't like it, we should move. So, but with, like I say, if three nine, I know 395 or Kitsky is a state property, to take a look at that, and either as one, as he's, one of the dealers, excuse me, one of the dealers said, we ought to red the whole thing, and that will take the parking off of Kitsky, but all that'll do is drive them back into the neighborhood. So, like I say, the lights, the parking, and the noise was our, was our own concern. We're in favor of the look. It's making that part of town look a lot better with all the facias on the properties that have upgraded in the last, last two years, Chevy, Nissan, and now the Buick dealer. So, does anything? Okay?
Okay. Is there anybody that'd like to speak that hasn't already filled out a request to speak form? If not, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Does anybody have questions for staff or the representatives?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Question for the applicant's representative, please. Mike? In our phone call that we had earlier this week, I was asking about the lighting. A few minutes ago, you stated the lighting, building lighting was going to be gone, so when you say the building lighting is going to be gone, would you explain that a little more, please?
Currently, there are spotlights. There's about four or five series of spotlights on top of the roof of the building that shine onto the cars. Those will be eliminated, and the building will be lit indirectly from the ground up, so to speak. And then the signs, the new signage will be internally illuminated, rather than spotlighted as it's occurring now, so...
So it's going to be uplighting from outside the building perimeter?
Correct. The signs are all internally illuminated.
Okay, thank you. Question for staff? Hi, Vern. Uplighting, how does that work with our dark skies lighting standards?
If the lights are underneath that canopy and they're up, that would comply with that if they're...
But we just heard they're going to be outside the footprint of the building, shining up onto the building.
I should clarify, they'll be up underneath that canopy area, so they're lighting the vehicles, not the building itself. I apologize if that... Like I said, the only exterior lighting will be the signs themselves.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And Vern, as far as loudspeaker systems, I didn't see anything in my staff report requesting a change to their existing system. Because of the additional square footage being added onto this, is there a requirement from the city to have this owner upgrade or modify his system to meet current code?
I don't know that we have a, Vern Close, Senior Planner, I don't know that we have a prohibition on the speakers, but generally, there's a noise requirement for residential adjacency, and then also, they could be conditioned just to not have them or to remove them, the ones that are, if there are some there that are affected by the remodel. I was not aware they had outdoor speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, no further questions.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have any other questions from the commission?
I have a question for the applicant's representative about parking. It says here that what you guys are asking is to just convert the parking to an angled, like, so the parking is angled instead of straight? So are you, are you gaining parking, or keeping it the same?
Overall, parking is going to remain the same. That's our site plan. What we're converting is some angled spaces along the frontage along Kitsky and Aeromotive, which is actually vehicle display area. The parking, there's customer parking in this area right here, and then, as you can see, and if you go out there, Reno Buick GMC Cadillac owns all the way back to Harvard, to the east, and they have quite a surplus of employee parking that their employees use now. There is parking available on Kitsky Lane, as the gentleman spoke. That's not red curbed, but that's, you know, open to the general public. But in terms of containing the employees onsite, there's more than ample space, and they actually, this site plan just includes the dealership, doesn't include their body shop and commercial, they have a body shop, commercial sales portion of the building that's not even included in this as well. So there's even additional parking above and beyond what's shown on this plan.
Okay, but as far as the customer parking? It's not changing.
Customer parking will be right up adjacent to the building itself. And then that's for, for sales, for service. The service department is located in this area, so there's parking to the east for the service customers and parts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Do we have any comments? I will entertain a motion.
Commissioner Kaufman? The case of LDC 13-00043, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner, lock seconds.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? This pass, this case passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. Welcome back.
Good job. Sorry I had the bail on you. Item three on the agenda, LDC 13-00042, 700 Gaslight Lane. Will the applicant or the applicant's representatives please step forward? You have fifteen minutes.
Good evening. My name's Troy Carson. This is Barbara Carson. We're representing the 700 Gaslight Lane applicant as well.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
So, one thing I want to address right off the bat is what this project is not. And this project is not a truck stop. It's not going to be a hub. What it is, is a family-owned business, and... And what we're proposing to do, we're applying for the special use permit for cuts in excess of twenty or greater, fills in greater of ten foot. And it's somewhat snowballed into an SUP, applying for more than what we were originally going for in grading operation. The residential adjacency is a big factor in the SUP as well. Truck terminal is the terminology that staff has used to help depict what we're actually doing as far as maintenance on vehicles. Quick overview of our typical daily operations. Operations will support a landscape retail center to provide for local residences and businesses, outdoor commodities. It's also going to provide for yard debris and construction refuse, composting and recycling. That'd be primarily the outdoor processing activities. Transportation logistics terminal, you know, that's us bringing in our commodities with our own vehicles. We have approximately five to seven heavy vehicles, which would be entering and leaving the site, primarily, primarily at the AM, prior to the AM peak, they'd be leaving the site prior to seven AM. They'd be returning to the site after the PM traffic peaks. You know, I think the traffic is one of the main concerns, along with public safety, with the trucks entering and leaving the site via Gaslight Lane, entering onto Socrates. It's a little bit difficult to see on the, on the map. You could see the checkered outline of the property, and as you exit the property, you're going to come down. I don't know. As you leave the property, you'll be coming down to, down to Gaslight. I don't know if that's me or someone turned it up. It's all, all okay?
Just try to get a little closer to the mic and speak into it, please. Thank you.
So, in the morning, the vehicles would start their engines, warm the engines for about five to ten minutes, and then they'd be leaving the site. The vehicles that would be stored on the site would primarily be stored to the north and to the south of the existing building, and directed away from any adjacent properties with noise concerns. Previous uses, along with current zoning of the property, industrial zoned, the assessor's records showing property uses, industrial trucking warehouse dated 2004 and prior. The property was previously a stone manufacturing facility. It was then abandoned, I believe, in 2003. Gang-related activities, drug, personal engagements, so on and so forth. Been diligently working with Reno PD to clean up the site. It's taken two years, but we've actually removed quite a bit of that behavior from the Gaslight Lane area. So we're trying to, you know, promote growth and helping to create a safer community by cleaning up the property. We have people there Monday through Friday right now, trying to keep people out of there. We've fixed all the fencing. It used to be open fencing all the way to the back residential properties adjacent to. We've fixed all that fencing. There's a variance, several variances in regards to this SUP permit. We're going to be putting slats in the chain link fence on one area. We're going to address the sound and visual impacts with tree, planting evergreen trees and terracing. The grades, I'm sure, you know, you've probably all seen the site plans and gone through the staff report that was prepared, and the, the grades that prevail just really don't, don't do much for putting a block wall to the adjacent property line. That would create a hardship, as well as, it wouldn't do anything for us. The landscaping on the, on the west portion variance requested, the five-foot, I believe it's ten-foot landscape on the adjacent residential is not going to do us of any good, as they're looking directly out fifty-five feet over the entire property. Down on the west side of the property, we're asking for variance for the front landscaping. That's a Timwah, Trucking Meadows Water Authority easement, and in which we're not allowed to develop upon plant, do any landscape whatsoever within that twenty-foot setback. So we're going to, we propose trellis and vines and painting to match on the proposed storage areas. The surrounding properties to that, to our 700 Gaslight property is Trucking Meadows Water Authority water holding tank, as well as NV Energy. They have a substation to the north. I believe that's where the gas transmission lines come in for your natural gas supply to the north part of Reno, as well as on the south property line is NV Energy's electrical substation. And to the east is vacant land, and you're going to have North McCarron there as well. You know, the, the traffic calculations, you know, I keep going back to the traffic because I believe that's one of the largest items that have seemed to have quite a few responses and, and concerns to. Traffic calculations provided for traffic volumes impact indicate minimal to none. Apparent calculate, calculations using fifteen trucks. At this time, we only have five. This gives us a little room to expand. We're a family-owned business. We're going to be growing. We're doing exactly the same operation up in Incline Village. We actually are adjacent residential up there, and everything seems to be just fine up there. Calculations with the fifteen trucks generate less than a hundred peak hour trips per municipality. Socrates is designed to carry a capacity of eight thousand, and average daily traffic and as a designated collector street, which Socrates is. The city of Reno records counts provide an average of thirty-five hundred average daily traffic trips as of 2009, and as of 2011, Union Pacific grade crossing report tabulates thirty-three hundred ADT. Also, not to mention, their reports, federal reports show twenty-six school buses crossing through the grade crossing per day, and the, the school buses actually have to come to a complete stop prior to crossing any train grade crossings. As of 1977, there's been zero accidents at the grade crossing. The railroad classification of the crossing is not recognized as a quiet zone. The railroad has two trains cross per day. Current traffic is less than fifty percent right now of design loads for Socrates Drive. The recent FRA study showed truck traffic at seven percent in 2011, and now it's at five percent. The two percent decrease is equivalent to a hundred and sixty peak hour trips, and we would, we're proposing, we'd create one hundred using fifteen trucks, and we only, right now, operate with five to seven. Like I was saying, that's just giving us a little bit of buffer to, to grow a little bit. So, you know, Socrates Drive has already provided the increased traffic loads, and I don't think it had, I think it had a negligible... I don't think it had, I think it had a negligible impact on city streets. I don't, I don't believe anyone has even foreseen that traffic was going to become a greater problem. Traffic statistics and research indicates the phase-in period is acceptable and would result in low, if any, impact at all. Another concern is people coming down Socrates to the train tracks, and we would have merging traffic entering Socrates. And we've contacted Washoe County Road Department as well as City of Reno regarding future attempts to install signage for merging vehicles and intersection awareness. The public transportation vehicles are seemingly the most significant hazard at the grade crossing. As I was saying, they have to federally mandated, they have to come to a complete stop prior to entering the grade crossing. The morning interface with the AM peak should be minimal as we propose to leave the site prior to 7:00 AM, which would be prior to the AM peaks, and we'd be returning to the site after the PM traffic peaks as well. I believe another comment was from Union Pacific saying they had their real estate law division, you know, opposed to the project just because of the curvature of the road uphill of the train crossing. And our vehicles would actually be leaving the site, driving down Gaslight Lane, looking at the train, which would be parallel, coming to a complete stop at a stop sign, looking both ways. Obviously, they'd see if the gates were down and a train was crossing, and then proceed when clear or wait on Gaslight Lane until the train had cleared the grade crossing and then proceed with caution. And do you have anything else to add?
One of the comments was, I'm Barbara Carson. One of the comments was they had stated that Socrates was the only ingress egress, and there is another Comstock route out of the area. So again, I don't believe that we would be infringing on any of the traffic flow at all. There is other routes, and we would not cause a backup.
And so primarily, I think it was concerns with residents in University Ridge, creating traffic backups, creating safety issues, public safety issues. I've tried to address all those comments that were received. And what we're, we're just a small business trying to open a landscape yard to provide jobs for the community as well as research and development. We work with UNR, we work with US Forest Service, we work with state and federal agencies, all environmental, and it's primarily just going to be a landscape retail yard. And once again, we're applying for the SUP for the mass grading portion of this project, and it's somewhat snowballed into leading people to believe this is going to be a truck terminal of, you know, the next Alamo truck stop, which it's not going, not going to That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have questions later. For the city, Vern, are you handling this one?
Hello, again, Vern Close, senior planner. As you know, this is, has several special use. The primary impact on, of this project or impacts of this project on the air would be potentially noise, truck traffic, and the visual impacts created by the operations going on on the site. If you look at, if you've gone through the staff report, there are a number of issues or items used to mitigate or recommended to mitigate the visual impacts. Along the west side with the residential adjacency, you generally would get a wall and 10 feet of landscaping, but because this site is 15, 20 feet below the grade of where the adjacent houses are, if they put that in, that really wouldn't mitigate anything. The noise would go right over the top. So what we looked at was because you have a good grade separation, and if we can get some visual screening, you get noise and visual screening with the grade distance and the recommended landscape mitigations. Also, the project is conditioned to operate under certain hours that has a maximum number of trucks that they can have. At this point, they probably have about half of what they're conditioned to be able to The impacts of traffic on this, from this project, from our perspective, are minimal. It generates about 100 trips per day. Those aren't peak hour trips, that's 100 total trips per day. And because the trucks would be leaving early in the morning and coming back after the PM peak or staggered through that timeframe, the interface with traffic on Socrates, you know, should be minimal. They have to stop before they pull onto the street. They have to, they can see the railroad crossing from where they're stopping. They can see the cars coming down the hill, and that's when they're leaving, and that would be the time when they would probably have the minimal impact on traffic because it's in the morning. On the way home, they're coming up the hill and taking a right-hand turn, and they're not even going into the neighborhood either either direction. So the the truck traffic interface, yes, you'll see an increase in trucks on Socrates down at the bottom of the hill, but it shouldn't be such an impact that it's going to create a traffic problem for the neighborhood. The variance for the east side, they're, they are constrained, the landscape variance for the east side, they're constrained because there's a 20-foot easement there that they can't build anything in. So what they have done is, any area that they disturb in that area, they will restore it with revegetation, and then they will treat the east sides of the bins with vines and paint them a color so that they blend in with the area. And then on the north and south sides of the bin areas and at the access points, landscaping will be installed to kind of fill out that area there. So that should mitigate and and account for the landscaping that they can't put in that, basically, they only have to put 10 feet in, but there's a 20-foot strip they can't put anything in. So this would account for that variation. The cuts and fills are relatively minor. I think the fill area is about a couple thousand square feet, and the cut area, I'm told that there's three areas, it's about 5,000 square feet, and they're all located along the These are the cut areas, and that's the fill area to create this slope so they can get their access up to the upper portion of the site. Those are, those slopes will be landscaped or covered over with their parking and circulation so you wouldn't even know that 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 had been done. And again, the landscaping that's, they had proposed was just at 100 to 500 throughout the slope, and we felt it was more important to pull the landscaping over this way and intersperse it in staggered groups so that you're, if you're looking at a top row, there in between them, there's another grouping of trees so that as you're going down, you're breaking up what you can see down there on the on the slopes with the trees. And then also at the base of the buildings on the west side, they're installing 10-foot evergreen trees at planting along those areas to help, again, kind of break up that area. The slope treatment should provide enhancement to the area as far as, you know, based on what the grading is and also just how the site currently exists. It's, it's pretty bare and bleak, and because they are doing a lot of grading, these, the trees that are recommended should should mitigate those impacts. You did receive a supplemental memo on the hours of and days of operation that staff is recommending a bit of an increase on what they can do. And then also, you received the applicant's request for that and why he wanted the hours and days increased. There was a letter from Union Pacific that the applicant referred to, and then there were a couple of emails. I provide those all to you as hard copies, but they are also sent to you as email today. So if you didn't get them, they're there at the table for you. Staff believes that with the conditions and code requirements that are placed on this project, that the project is consistent with the area, and we can make the findings. We are recommending approval of the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Vern. This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item and you haven't already filled out a request to speak for him, please do so now with Michelle. And before we get into that, are there any disclosures on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wieske, I received several emails regarding this project.
Commissioner Stapleton.
I received several, several emails as well.
Commissioner Wozniak.
I've received several emails as well.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I received several emails.
Commissioner Locke.
I received several emails.
And I have also. Okay. Again, public hearing. I have two requests to speak. If you wish to speak, please fill out a request to speak for him with the secretary down there. Lee McCord, come on up. You say you represent myself and my husband. You wish to make a statement. You have three minutes.
Sorry, I'm not hearing very good, so if I miss something, you say. Bottom line, I didn't know what I was going to say when I come in here. The first thought I had was say, are you guys nuts? This is an extremely nice area. We moved in here about a year and a half ago. We're up the hill, so we don't have to look at this, whatever you want to call it. The bottom line of it is, both of us are not spring chickens. We've been around long enough to see what happens when there's trucks on the road. In fact, that was a big issue with where, the state that we lived in was trucks. And what do trucks do? Number one, they screw up traffic. So there's traffic congestion on Socrates and McCarran. And the other fact of the matter is, is that when you're trying to go someplace, now you're behind this truck that's barely moving. I do need to say, I applaud him because he wants to work, and there's too many lazy people out there that don't. So I do applaud that. But what I don't applaud is what was left out of what he said and what he said.
Please address your comments.
This is our home. This is where we live. These are nice homes. Socrates was just paved in that as we were moving in. So it's a new street, it's a beautiful area, and they want to bring this in. Now, don't try to tell me that a screening plant isn't going to be loud. It is going to be very loud. And don't try to tell me asphalt being crushed up, whatever, however they do it, is not going to add pollutants to the air. I've seen it happen. It will. So it's a bunch of hogwash, what they're saying. This is our home. This isn't where they live, so they don't care. There's a lot of, and I mean this, well, I shouldn't say this. Reno's a really nice area, and we're glad we're here, and we love the area, but there's some really slummy areas around here. Why not park something like that that's dirty and messy and stinky and loud in one of those areas? He doesn't live where I live. He doesn't. Her idea, there's another way to get through to get down the hill. Yeah, there is, if we want to go this way, that way, blah, 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 and stop signs. This is our, where we live. We should have the right to be able to go down the street and get out of there if we want to without have to go. Why don't they take their trucks that way? Because neighbors there wouldn't like it. This is appalling, not that it's even thought of, that it's even considered. To go ahead and buy the property, I'm assuming he's bought the property, he's assuming that it's going to just go right on through. It's a bunch of baloney, and I really hope that you guys think about it. Would you want something like that next to your home, no matter what kind of stats somebody else comes up with? That's what I got to say. Did you want to add anything? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ed Hawkins?
100 trips a day.
Please identify yourself for the record. You have three minutes.
For the record, Ed Hawkins, even though this is right below my part of the ward, and I'm North Valleys for Ward Four, I have several friends that either live on Socrates or right off the adjacent properties where this development or this project's supposed to go. Number one, I've looked at everything, and it doesn't fit. It will never fit in that area. I worked for Granite Construction for a while, and I'm, I'm very familiar with what goes on as far as the screening process, the noise and the dust. It doesn't fit the residential neighborhood. The gentleman spoke on leaving, trucks leaving before 7:00 in the morning so there wouldn't be a traffic problem. That becomes a noise problem. If I'm in bed at 6:30, which I shouldn't be, but if I am and want to sleep till 7:00, I don't want to hear a truck with backup alarms or or equipment moving around before I'm ready to get up. I had a problem with that before out there instead, next to the sewer plant when they were doing work at 5:30 in the morning, and we got that taken care of. Anyway, you're creating a lot of commercial traffic through that residential area, and I believe there still is a code prohibiting that. We do have that out instead. Maybe we're not new to this, but we don't have commercial traffic going through our residential areas out there. I can't see it happening on Socrates as well. If that does take place, you do have buses that stop there, pick up little kids. I'd sure hate to see one of those kids hurt. But back to the original thing, it doesn't fit. If you look at everything here, I'd be surprised if you could find, see the findings on all of this. There's got to be a couple there that that you're not going to find, so. Opposition, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Now's your opportunity. Hearing and seeing none. I'm going to close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board for questions. Where do we start? On this side, Commissioner Kaufman.
This is for the applicant. You made a comment about leaving the site prior to traffic, so, or peak areas. Is, you know, what time do you plan on the trucks leaving?
Typically, the trucks are gone before 7:00 AM.
And tell us what kind of trucks these are. Are these?
They're tractor, trailer, and dump trucks.
Okay. So like side dumps or?
Yeah.
Or bottom could be? Okay. And then on this picture, because it was kind of confusing, your parking will be behind the?
The hashed area.
Yeah. Can you just point exactly where your parking area is going to be? Okay. In that area?
Yeah.
Okay. Done for staff.
And then we have proposed, we're going to scatter the trees through here, through these areas to break up the view as well as tone down any noise. And any of the vehicles that would be leaving in the early morning would be parked out at the, for this extremities away, or even we'd park them down here at this lower level. And this, the grade difference between this lower level and this top level is approximately, you know, 50 feet, give or take. So you've got a pretty, pretty good two-to-one embankment right here with vegetation that would act as a noise buffer as well.
Are are your trucks the only ones that will enter there, or will you have trucks that will bring material in other than your own trucks?
Yeah, or customers, which would be between normal operating hours, Monday through Friday, stated hours, as well as Saturday for retail operation.
Okay. But I understand that part of it. What I'm saying is the material being brought in. Is that being brought in by your trucks or are those by other trucks?
Yeah, our trucks as well as others.
Okay.
As well as, you know, local, local businesses, the, you know, landscapers coming to drop off their green waste, recycling.
Okay. Thank you.
And that would primarily be between small, you know, or the homeowner with his pickup truck full of, full of brush, leave, leaves and sod, you know, grass trimmings coming for the composting, or the homeowner that decides he wants to chip out his pathway to his front door and load up the asphalt in the back of the truck, and he needs a spot to dump it instead of taking it all taking it all the way to Lockwood Regional Landfill and filling a landfill. He brings it to our site, and we recycle it.
Okay. Thank you. Vern, for you, question. In these hours, the revised hours. Let me get to that page. I mean, I don't see where it's approved that they can leave before seven or even be there. Isn't that the hour of operation? I mean, I don't see those trucks leaving before seven. Am I wrong, or?
Well, the general operation hours of what's going on the site would be during that time. I guess you're going to have to ask applicant, he indicated they'd be leaving before seven.
Yeah. Which is a violation of what we're doing. Is that correct?
I guess that would be.
Okay. Thanks.
That's all the questions. Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Luck.
Okay. I think we have a lot of questions. This is for the applicant. May I say one thing?
No, this is, the presentation portion is over. You just answer the questions that are presented to you.
So you said before, when this was open before, when this was a business before, it was a rock processing facility. What was it again? Can you say specifically? Vaughn Material had it for years. This property's been an industrial site since the early '60s, and there was a company in there. It was Conley, and they did all the headstones for the cemeteries, and they operated for quite a few years at this facility. Okay. Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to ask for now.
And they imported all their headstone, large granite boulders via tractor-trailer to the site, used large cranes to remove the large stone, bring it inside, and use large industrial saws to create the headstones.
Okay. Thank you.
This end, Commissioner Stapleton.
I do have, I have one question about the traffic issues, and then I might have some questions after that, but, so for Bill. So the traffic seems to be a concern for folks in the neighborhood, and I see that in the staff report, this didn't trigger a traffic study. So what is that trigger, and how do you guys determine that this didn't even, wasn't even going to generate enough traffic to justify a study?
Okay. For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer. Under Reno code, anything that generates 200 or more peak hour trips requires a full-fledged traffic study. Anything that generates 100 or more peak hour trips would require what we consider an entry and access study to ensure that onsite access, entry in and out of the site is sufficient. This, we used several, you know, methods. We went straight to ITE for their trip generation rates utilizing a truck terminal classification, which was the most intense classification, as if it was the entire site of seven and a half acres as a truck terminal. It generated about 50 peak hour trips, considerably less than that. We also went back and considering the 15 trucks that were maximum allowed via condition, where if those were to come in, you've got somebody coming into that truck potentially, a trip in, and the truck leaving is a trip out of 30, with the auxiliary uses, potentially 40 peak hour trips would be generated, again, less than what would be required to do any type of study. If we saw a significant issue, we could request additional information. In this case, you know, Socrates is a commercial collector. It designated as a collector street. There are no residences between Gaslight and McCarran, which is the route this, and this, you know, use would travel from McCarran up to Gaslight on Socrates. Like, again, there are no residential accesses or residences in that area, so there wouldn't be, any of the traffic wouldn't be crossing and passing any residential areas. So we felt that it wasn't significant enough to require any additional analysis.
So Socrates there, the portion that the trips will be generated on from this project, that's a commercial collector? It's not a residential street?
It's, it's, it's designed as a collector street. It's so, commercial collectors, residential collectors, basically what it serves. I mean, it's a similar design. It's basically the same design, whether it's a commercial or residential collector, is what it serves. From McCarran up to Gaslight, it serves both residential further up on Socrates, and it serves the industrial area that is Gaslight Lane. Gaslight is all the properties that come off of Gaslight and are industrial zone properties, so we would consider that both a commercial and residential collector in that section.
So you don't consider this street a residential street because this portion of it isn't serving residential?
I would consider above Gaslight Lane to be strictly a residential collector.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now. I have one more question for later.
Okay. Commissioner Wieski, anything? Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, for, sorry, your name again?
Bill.
My mic on. You dress the traffic for the applicant's vehicles. What about vendors and customers? That seems like a significant amount of traffic itself. How would that affect the numbers you spoke of?
Again, most of those due to hours, we wouldn't anticipate most of that traffic to be during the peak hour trips. The peak is the four to six and the seven to nine. They're closed at five. We didn't anticipate, like I said, we bumped those peak hour numbers by about 10. The other trips and stuff are, they're low generators in the peak hour, so we didn't anticipate this type of operation to generate a large volume of peak hour trips.
Excuse me. Commissioner Olivas, can I piggyback on that, please? Bill, I understand you, the way that you looked at this was for a truck terminal, but what about the retail portion of this? We heard tonight that there's a retail business going on in here also. And, and they're expecting people and vendors and/or the general public, starting at 7:00 in the morning until they close at 5:00.
Yeah.
So was that, that was, you combined the two, the retail aspect of it and the truck terminal?
We, we looked at the retail aspect of it as, like I said, that's where we bumped those numbers. We took the truck terminal, like I said, we took the full ITE number of 54, as if it was the whole entire site. That created the most, and we took the, a reduced number because they're limited to 15 trucks. You know, put all of those in the peak hour, which they may or may not be in a single peak hour. And then when you add, you know, the retail aspect to it, in the peak hours for this type of facility, they're not that large, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wozniak.
Question for staff. Vern? I'd like to get a better understanding of the history of the area, and knowing that this zoning has not changed for this parcel for quite some time. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And when the neighborhood moved in the residential that butts up against this industrial use, what is the vintage of those houses that are adjacent to this property?
University Ridge was approved in the early '90s, and the predecessor to University Ridge was University Heights, which was approved in the mid-'80s, mid-late-'80s, about '87, '86. And there was other residential to the southwest and west of where University Ridge is. That vicinity map doesn't go far enough, but that's the University Ridge area, right? And here, the PUD zone properties. Then off, off the map over here, there was third acre lots in the county, and then it got brought into the city and the PUD was put in place. But that area's been industrial. They have the southwest gas facility up in this area here. There's the big Sierra Pacific, NV Energy, with the 345 KV power lanes came down 395. That's the big substation right here. There's a water tank here, Tamwa, and then there's another NV Energy substation here. But pretty much this area between University Ridge and the Mobile Home subdivision to the east is all institutional industrial, and it has historically, for as long as I've been here and longer, been those types of uses. And I, and I'm pretty sure that that's been zone industrial ever since I've worked for the city, which is over 25 years. So all this area's been in an industrial institutional type use since probably many years before the houses were considered. That doesn't mean we should discount that the houses that are there and the impacts generated by the project shouldn't be accounted for, but we believe with the way it's designed, with the code requirements and the recommended conditions, that those issues are properly mitigated.
Great. You almost answered my next question, and I was trying to get an idea of any other truck traffic, either down Gaslamp or anywhere within the University Ridge areas that would feed into Socrates?
Well, the only truck traffic that probably would go up into the neighborhood would be, you know, commercial trucks going up to serve the residents delivering furniture, working on people's houses, that sort of stuff. There are maintenance vehicles that, when I was out at the site the other day, there's an NV Energy truck coming out of the substation. So there are maintenance vehicles for those facilities that go up there from time to time, but this, this probably would be the primary truck generator or traffic generator from the Gaslight Lane area.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Start round two. Commissioner Stapleton.
Yeah. Question for staff, and then maybe for the applicant, just in regards to the hours of operation and the amended memo that we received today, increasing the hours of operation for the processing days to Saturdays. I have a concern about adding Saturdays on to that for processing, not necessarily for sales activities, but processing to me sounds like the noisy part of this enterprise. And I am thinking about those homes up there on that ridge and the fact that they're higher in elevation and knowing that sound carries up. I don't know, in terms of the adjacency and the, you know, decibel levels, and, you know, if, if you can measure, you know, how loud this is actually going to be, but I would be concerned, especially on a Saturday morning with sound traveling up, that that, you know, might be a little much to have the processing also on a Saturday. So that's a statement combined with a question. The question is, really, what is the decibel impact of this processing activity? And am I right to think of it the way that I am, that this is below, the houses are above? I mean, I know the sound travels up, so.
Well, the, the code limits the noise generated by the facility at the residential property line, which the processing area would be right in this area here, which is at the base of this slope, and then there's a flat area, and then there's another slope, and then it slopes up to the houses that are there. So from the property line to that location's about 360 feet, and it's about 60 feet, 60 feet below the grade of the houses to the west. So if I don't have the noise generation decibels for that activity, maybe applicant has that, but from our perspective, when looking at it from here, and again, we could get those noise, that noise data for this, or go with what code says. Basically says you can't exceed 65 decibels at the property line. But again, I don't know what this actually generates 50 feet away from it.
Okay. So just a follow-up question. For residentially adjacent property, the decibel level can't exceed 65, is that right? So that would be true also at these homes surrounding?
Correct.
So that if, if they were finding that the noise was more than that, they would have recourse through calling code enforcement?
Or if they thought it was, that would be a code enforcement issue.
And then the city would come out and measure that and make sure that the?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. That's all the questions I have for now.
Questions? Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you. Have a question for the applicant, please? In order for us to make the findings on the variance, you need to provide information of what your hardship is. And I read your, in your information, in your packet, that the 10-foot wall, and I understand better tonight about the 10-foot wall, but would you be more specific to me, please, and tell me how this would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or interest to property, or improvements in the vicinity? In other words, your neighbors. How is this not going to affect their welfare when you have asked for specific business hours of 7:00 to 5:00, and yet you've told us here tonight that you're going to conduct business before 7:00 in the morning, which means you're probably going to conduct business of offloading vehicles after 5:00 at night and/or on weekends? So how, is this not going to be negative to somebody's welfare who's an adjacent property owner?
We don't plan on any decibels exceeding the 65 at property line whatsoever, and, you know, regular business will take place 7:00 AM to?
Not regular business.
Regular business.
Business. It doesn't say regular business. It says business.
Yeah.
So that's your guys showing up and running around the yard, loading dump trucks, warming stuff up, whatever, loading stuff up, and then leaving.
Yeah. We plan on just monitoring them and keeping it to show up, get in your vehicle and leave.
Okay? After 7:00 in the morning?
If we have to make it that way, we will.
Well, that's what you asked for.
That's what I was going to say, is if for some reason the board finds that that's not a reasonable time, we are willing to make it an appropriate time for our business.
Okay.
Keeping in mind what we do do.
Okay. And, and would you elaborate on what the retail aspect of your business is? I mean, you say you're a landscaper, so landscape materials and plants? What is your retail business?
No plants. We're not landscapers. We're, we supply the aggregate commodities for landscapers.
Okay. So you will have a rock crushing plant?
No. We will not be crushing rock.
Asphalt, concrete?
Recycling asphalt and concrete. As, as long as everything, you know, noise decibels are, you know, within code, then yes. Obviously, we have to keep our dust abatement, you know, EPA regulations. We're not just going to go in there like cowboys. We, you know, we do the exact same thing we're proposing in Incline Village, you know? And we actually do have a residence in University Ridge as well, and we're not trying to, you know?
Okay. Last question I have then. On this map here, would you show me where your access road comes in and out, please?
That, that goes down to Gaslight Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for the applicant.
Commissioner Kaufman.
What, when you crush concrete, okay, how do you, how do you mitigate the dust? How's that done?
On-site with water.
On-site?
Yeah.
Well, how, yeah, but tell me.
Yeah, explain it.
The only reason is I have a lot of concrete experience.
With, with water, you have spray nozzles, you have, you know?
We have a water truck.
We have a water truck. We have, you set up sprinkler systems.
Do you run it through a machine, or do you use a jackhammer? Is it, how do you crush the concrete? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, we go into an impact crusher, a mobile impact crusher, which is, you know, you take a front-end loader, you scoop up the material, you dump it into an impact crusher, and make a recycled product that goes back underneath your roadways that you drive on every day.
Okay.
Instead of filling up the landfill.
Okay.
I was wondering if you should elaborate on the materials.
Commissioner Locke, any more questions?
Commissioner Locke with a question, don't sit down?
No, go away.
Can you tell me, sorry, thank you, can you tell me how long you've been opening up in Incline?
We've been at our site since 19, approximately 1989.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wieski, any more questions? Commissioner Stapleton.
No more questions, I have comments when we're ready.
Commissioner Olivas.
I have a question for the applicant. You described your crushing operation would be the portable impact crusher. I guess, trying to get a picture of the volume, and I know, I don't know where the break-even on that would be, how many, how many tons would you anticipate crushing on, and over what time period? I know, just trying to get a feel of the volume of concrete and asphalt, you'd be running through that, and the size of the equipment, and hence the customer and vendor trucks that would be in and out in addition.
Yeah, number one, we start with, is it even economical right now to do so? There's a large market for such, so we probably wouldn't even introduce that. We'd probably wind up stockpiling the material there, hauling it offsite and crushing it But if you were to crush, you'd need a quantity to crush. So, you would, you wouldn't be crushing every single day for 350 days a year. You would create a stockpile. Once you hit about 4,000 ton, you'd probably bring in a mobile crusher, crush for probably five days straight, send the mobile crusher away, and then you have a resalable product, all recycled, going back to your state, your public projects, helping them keep their cost down, your cost.
Follow on on that then. So, that's some pretty significant stockpiles. Where would those be all stockpiled here before and after the crushing? And how would that appear and be blocked from view from everybody?
Down in the lower, lower area.
And that's where you propose to keep your materials?
Yeah, so, right here, we're going to have a wall for the material bins. On the backside, we propose vegetation. Looking up, the only thing that you could see, looking at this portion of the property, is from McCarran. When you're driving by about 50 miles an hour, you'll see the stone wall with vegetation. The stockpiles are going to be in this portion right here, up into this area right here. Property elevations between here and here, I think you're, you know, I think you're probably about 80 feet in elevation, and distance, I think it's actually a little bit more than the 360. I believe that's about, it's about 400-plus feet to this location.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, that's good, thank you.
Commissioner Woosley, you have more?
I have one more question for staff. Vern? I just want to be clear on the statement of hours of operation, and whether that means usually business hours or activity outside, you know, in the inside building, you know, work when workers are showing up to work. You know, obviously, there's a difference if you're inside doing paperwork versus outside with a front loader loading a truck. I just wanted to get the definition from you.
Vern Close, Senior Planner, based on questions from the commission and also responses by the applicant, it seems to me that it should be, they can operate from 7:00 to 5:00, or what those hours are. I mean, if someone's coming to work and they get there, that's coming to work, but the operation shouldn't start before those hours or after those hours. Just to make it clear to everyone that things aren't dribbling over on either side of the hours of operation. So, the public can be certain of when they're supposed to be doing stuff and when they can't be doing stuff. So, that's the way I would see it.
And that would include any activity in the yard that would produce any noise?
Correct. I mean, if someone's driving into work quarter to 7:00, I think that's reasonable, but if they're out starting up trucks at quarter to 7:00 or 6:30, based on, you know, our discussion here, I think they should not be doing that.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions from the commission? You've asked all of them that I have had, so I have no questions. We'll open it up for comments and discussion. Who'd like to kick it off? Okay, Commissioner Woosley, please.
I just kind of wanted to follow up with the discussion slash comments from fellow commissioners and talk about those hours of operation, and I thought it was a good comment from Commissioner Stapleton about retail hours as well on Saturday. I think that's something that I think we should discuss, and definitely knowing what's really going to be the noise pollutants versus retail, even though it sounds like with some of the retail, even that could actually, you know, some of the noise would come from retail, but not necessarily a rock crushing, but at the same time, we have to disconsider, you know, there's a 65 decibel at property line, and should that take care of everything? Something that I'd like to get your guys' comments on.
Thank you, Commissioner Woosley.
I have, I have a comment. I've been pretty quiet. I'm looking at the findings for the special use permit, and quite frankly, there's two I can't make. And it kind of hurts me to do that. I like the recycling aspect, and I'm absolutely pro-new business and business coming in, but I can't make finding A and F for the special use permit. I also can't make finding C, which Commissioner Wieski related to earlier for the variance, so it's tough for me to say this, but because of those reasons and my inability to make those findings, you can guess which way I'll be going on this one. So, Commissioner Stapleton.
You're up.
Okay, just to address Commissioner Woosley's comments first, I, to me, the retail's okay, it's the processing on Saturdays that I would support, limiting the hours on that to removing processing on Saturdays and everything else staying the same. I respectfully disagree with the chair. I can make these findings, I can make the findings for the special use permit, the ones that he called out, as well as the others. And for the variance, I also can make the findings, I can make finding C, and I understand that there is a hardship, I think that's real, so I understand the need for the variance, and I think that the mitigations, you know, meet the intent of the master plan and the code. You know, for me, you know, this has always been industrial, it's always been a similar use, and, you know, the houses were built, you know, and people bought next to residential knowing that. Still, you know, despite that, residential adjacency is an issue, and in my mind, it has been addressed with the site plan and the mitigations proposed. And I could support this with just the amendment of the processing removed on Saturdays.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Commissioner Stapleton, what was that last comment I...
I'm sorry, I said I could support this with changing the condition 14 to remove the allowance for processing on Saturdays. So, I would, I would not allow processing on Saturdays, but the rest of the condition regarding the hours of operation are okay with me. So, it's retail, you know, seven days, and processing, the condition has six days, including Saturdays, and I would suggest taking that down to five days and remove Saturdays. Yeah, did we have to ask the applicant if that's something they would agree to, if it's a condition, or?
Yes.
We don't, okay, but they do anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I guess before the meeting, I had some issues with the special use permit on DNF. I think they pretty much answered those questions. I also had, until we really looked at this plan and explained a little more about the grading on the variance, condition C, which, so I could support this project. My real question is that the applicant doesn't understand 7:00 is 7:00. You have, you know, neighbors, you know, in all honesty, that would, you know, shut you down because, and if pull this special use permit, if you didn't abide by that. And that's, and that's why I asked you the question to begin with. So, that'd be, you know, my biggest concern of this project.
Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Woosley, to kind of get back to your question a little bit, I'm, the processing that takes place and can take place, if it's five days every 60 days for processing, or 90 days, whatever it is, or 30 days, we already ran into this situation three years ago in West Reno. Commissioner Kaufman and Chairman Romeo sat on the commission with us. You might have been coming on board at that time, when the rock crushing plant for the train trench got shut down on West Fourth Street because of the amount of noise and the amount of dust with its residential adjacency. And it had slopes and separation very similar to this, and yet they could not keep their decibel levels down to keep that rock crushing plant open, nor could they keep control of the truck traffic on, based on their residential adjacency. And it was indirect truck traffic. And so, that's why I had such a hard time with this when I read it, and I still have a hard time understanding staff's position to approve this. Although, listening to Vern this evening, I understand more his thought process behind it, the elevation change and the line of sight, the distance that he's trying to accomplish. I wouldn't want to do any less than what staff has recommended. The hours of business, same as Commissioner Kaufman and Commissioner Stapleton have addressed, very concerned with it, because 7:00 means that's when you go out and you start your trucks up, and you let them warm up, you let them build up air pressure, you load up trucks, you're banging around, it's not 6:45, it's not 6:15, so that you can get your materials to a job site at 7:00. That means that's when you start firing up that equipment. 15 minutes, as we were told tonight, is time for people to evacuate their yard. That means at 7:15, you're starting to move out into the traffic on Socrates. It's at the bottom end of Socrates. It's where traffic is going to be exiting to get onto North McCarron, to go wherever they're going to do business. So, I don't know if that helps shed any light on it, not trying to convince you one way or another, but, you know, a truck that pulls out, a commercial driver with a commercial's driver's license is not going to like the ticket he gets and the citation he gets, and I'm sure the homeowners up on, off of Socrates and those houses are going to be calling if truck drivers start pulling out and blocking that intersection very quickly. And NHP is going to be there, or RPD is going to be there, taking care of that problem. But I, the hours of operation concern me because of what I heard tonight. And because of that, I have a hard time making some findings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woosley.
Thank you for that feedback. I am, not being in the construction industry, sometimes I struggle with all part of the processing and rock crushing and screening, and, you know, the normal decibels that levels they, you know, that come apart. And at 7:00, I think one of my concerns, what I'm looking for is, I mean, I do agree down on Lower Socrates, it's less of an issue, but I wouldn't want to go any earlier than 7:00, but also at 7:15, it's a prime time for everybody to come and going down and going to work. And those are one of my concerns. But on the flip side, this area's been zoned industrial, you know, for decades, and just listening to everything, I am really struggling with my thoughts on this, and I'm on the fence about making some of the findings, and so, thank you for your feedback, it does help.
Commissioner Wieski, if I can throw this out there for you also, I agree with you that tonight we learned this property's been industrial for maybe 40 years or more. It was in the county at the time, so, you know, before it came into the city, the city has left it as industrial. The only reason that this is before us tonight is because of the special use permit. But not all industrial uses, and this is for you homeowners also, not in all industrial uses on this property have to come before us before they could receive a business license or do business there and have trucks going in and out of that site. It's only because of the type of operation that is being asked for by the applicant tonight is the reason that they're here before us tonight. If they chose to do something else, and maybe it is headstones, if they want to go back and start doing headstones, and they've got trucks that can leave there during regular business hours, whatever those are, doesn't come before us. None of us get any input in this, including you guys, unless they violate an ordinance of the city or the county. And so, they've, there's a right to do business on this property as it's currently zoned industrial. So, that's why I'm having a hard time with this this evening.
And I'd like to add that that's exactly correct. It's not that it's an industrially zoned area or that business can be done there. They're asking for over and above what would normally, what would normally be done and how it would normally be done in that area. And I'm glad that you remembered Fourth Street, because that was a mess. We had 100 property owners out here trying to get that revoked. If you remember, the noise complaints were horrendous. Fourth Street was a muddy mess for a mile either direction from that rock crushing place when the, when the train trench was being done. And I see a repeat of that. If they're going to do a business in an industrial area and it's properly done for it, they don't need an extra entitlement, I don't have an issue with it.
Mr. Chairman, though, I would like to remind you, it's a different operator and a different business and a different operation, and we shouldn't be comparing the two, although...
I am not, but you...
We can sit back and reflect on our experiences sometimes.
You did jog my memory in a good way, thank you very much for that.
Can I... If I can jump in really quickly, Claudia Hansen, plant engineering manager, and Commissioner Wieski read my mind there, that you do need to be reviewing this site on its own issues, its own merits, its own situation, and do not compare it, please do not compare it to other sites, but look at the site on its own for the request that's in front of you and consider the findings that are in front of you. And also, just for the record, just a slight clarification, any development of the site would require a special use permit for residential adjacency. So, any alteration of the site or a new development coming on to the project would require it for residential adjacency.
But they're asking for three, four actually, special use permit for four different items, not just for residential adjacency. So, they are asking for additional entitlement than just residential adjacency. And I'll try not to think about Fourth Street, I promise.
Could I add a, some feedback also, without comparing this project to another, in terms of getting insight on the intensity of this use? I am familiar with where their operation is in Incline, and if it's going to be a similar operation to that, you know, and they haven't had any problems up there... similar operation to that, you know, and they haven't had any problems up there, you know, being familiar with that. And, I mean, you know, it could be that this, you know, the impacts aren't as extreme as we're imagining. However, in my mind, I, one of the reasons I could support this is because I think that the mechanisms that we have in place would protect homeowners, you know, in the event that this, you know, that they weren't meeting their EPA regulations or code, you know, in terms of managing their dust and their noise. So I do think that the mechanisms are in place to protect the homeowners and to sort of give them a shot, you know, to do this in the right way.
Commissioner Locke, if I can just jump in, I agree with Commissioner Stapleton, especially knowing that the applicant has been operating a residential adjacent business in Incline for all of these years. I mean, to me, I mean, I can make the findings, and frankly, I can trust the applicant.
Is there any further discussion? Discussion, motion, who wants to jump in?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I, to my fellow commissioners, I would and can make the findings if we go to business hours of Monday through Friday, seven to five, any crushing process, eight to four on Monday through Friday. Business hour on Saturday of eight to five, no crushing. And I could make those findings. And I would be in support of it.
Mr. Chairman, and I'd agree with that. And I think that's kind of what Commissioner Stapleton, but bringing down that crushing operation also, you know, and normally there, I doubt if they would do that crushing operation because it's a mobile crusher. So I assume it's probably somebody else that comes in and does that. So, and, you know, normally, I'd hate to take the retail part of it out on Saturdays and Sundays because that's when the homeowners are there. But I would agree with that.
What's the will of the commission?
Just a comment, I think bringing it down to that level brings it to my, where I'm comfortable, and I can support Commissioner Wieski's proposal.
So that would be a modification of condition 14 to reflect what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm okay with Sundays also, but I'm okay if they were operating on Sundays, but I can go along with my fellow commissioners in limiting it to what Commissioner Wieski's motion, no retail on Sundays. So I could support the motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment, whoever makes the motion, I'm sorry to, I apologize to the applicant because I just overlooked your request for Sunday hours. And I believe your Sunday hours of eight to four are compatible with retail sales only, no crushing. So I would add Sunday, amended Sunday of eight to four.
Let's have a motion.
Do we need to ask the applicant first if they're okay with the, no?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I'm ready to make a motion if all the other commissioners are done.
I think they're done.
This Rob Boni with the City Attorney's Office. Could you break those motions into the SUP and the variance, please, variances, please?
So we'll do SUP 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then variance 1, 2, and 3.
Well, we just break it by special use permit and variance, right? The case of LDC 13-00042, 700 Gas Light Lane, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, including the condition that we received tonight with the addition that there shall be no processing or recycling or crushing on Saturdays and Sundays, and the recycling and crushing on weekdays shall be reduced to 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion. Does everyone understand the motion?
I can, yes, I also can make the findings and second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Let the record show, pass six to one. Can we have a?
So in the case of LDC 13-00042, 700 Gas Light Lane, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variances, subject to conditions. I can make all the findings and would include, again, the hours that I read in prior.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second the motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries six to one. I'm going to read this for whoever's concerned. "Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance, or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person agreed by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must make his or her or its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission's With that, I think we're going to take a 10-minute break before we move into the snows issue. So we'll be in recess for 10 minutes. Oh, good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to call the meeting of the planning commission back to order. The next case is LDC 13-00041, Our Lady of Snow's parking lot. Before we get into this, let's go through disclosures because I know there's several. Let's start down with Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Need to disclose that I am a parishioner of Our Lady of the Snows. Also, my employer has done work in the past for Our Lady of the Snows. At this time, my employer does not have any open contracts, future contracts, or work going on with Our Lady of the Snows or the Reno Diocese. Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton.
I met with the applicant's representative, and I received some emails as well as some Facebook messages. That's all.
Commissioner Olivas, I received some emails.
Okay. Commissioner Woosley.
I as well have received several emails.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I have received emails also.
Commissioner Locke.
I have not received emails, but I do know Mr. Fuch. My son attended Our Lady of the Snows, but we are no longer there, and it does not impact my decision.
Okay. And I have received emails, and I have met with the applicant's representative. So with that, we'll go, move on to the issue. Is the applicant or their representative available? You have 15 minutes. Please identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Garrett Gordon with the Law Firm of Lewis and Roca, today representing Our Lady of the Snows. With me tonight is Tim Fuch, principal of Our Lady of the Snows, and three school board members to answer any questions this body may have. I'm going to provide a little bit of background and then jump into the application. In April, make sure I have a good angle here, in April of last year, the Reno City Council approved the abandonment of Lander Street between Walker and Monroe Street. That approval came with 10 conditions. So we have to satisfy 10 conditions of approval within the year, so within April of this year in order to record the abandonment. One of those conditions relates to a parking agreement. City council felt that we needed to mitigate the loss of that street by doing a couple things, working with law enforcement, working on a drop-off and pickup plan. And you'll see I've highlighted here, we need to come up with 17 additional parking spaces in the area. Again, that was to mitigate the concern of lost parking spaces due to the abandonment. So what did we do? Well, we tried to, we looked in the area where we were to come up with these parking spaces. We first looked at this lot, which is behind Snow's and behind the church, but realized that that could not be opened up to the public to meet that 17 spaces because those spaces are tied to the use permit for the expand, the recent expansion of the school. We also looked at possibly purchasing these properties here, knocking down the homes and putting a parking lot. We, we and me, myself, have been to many, many neighborhood meetings, NAB meetings, neighborhood meetings, and certainly we got a lot of pushback from the community of, you know, these are on with argue historical homes, there's no existing parking, you'd be adding a parking lot into an existing neighborhood. We were not a big fan. So what we did come up with was to expand an existing parking lot. Currently, there's a parking lot on the corner of Wright and Walker Street. Again, park, school, church, Wright Street, Arlington, Walker, there's currently a parking lot on the corner there. It's owned by Snow's, it's used by Snow's parishioners and school members. The idea was to expand that lot. We thought that would have the least impact on the community, given Our Lady of the Snows already owned, or the Diocese already owned, the parcel next door, given the Diocese owns the parcel next to that, that it would be the less impact, and actually, it would be a good location, given, again, the intent was to have people not parking in the neighborhoods as a result of this abandonment, but park close to the school, close to the church, use that parking so they're not parking in front of homes. So the application before you is twofold. One, a special use permit, MF 14 zoning, we're in the Plumas neighborhood, residential core, planning overlay district. The use permit is for non-residential development adjacent to residentially zoned property. Or in other words, putting a parking lot next to residentially zoned property requires a use permit. You'll see when I pull up the site plan, the reason why we believe this should be supported, and staff believes it should be supported, is we've done a number of things to mitigate the impact on the existing, on the adjacent properties, including a six-foot wall along the western boundary, which I'll show on the site plan, and including a landscaped area along the southern boundary. To do this expansion also requires, we thought at first, three variance applications. The first one was lighting. At the existing lot, there is no lighting, there was no lighting requirement. Our Lady of the Snows believed there was no need to put therefore lighting on the new portion, and frankly, not only for our benefit, but if we thought if the residents were used to not having lighting, putting lighting on the new portion would be problematic. And working with staff, and I do want to compliment Ms. Hanson and Nathan Gilbert and the staff for working with us diligently on this application, we said, you know what, after meeting with Reno PD, we'll find a way to comply. So for the record, we're withdrawing our lighting variance application. We'll comply with code and figure out a way to do it. Next, the landscaping variance. You'll see on the site plan, our original variance asked for a waiver of the 15-foot setback requirement. So on the new, here's to give you your bearings, here's the current lot, here's the new lot, the request would be, or was, to waive the 15-foot setback requirement. So on Wright, you need 15 feet of landscaping, abutting Wright Street. And working with staff and then working with our landscape architect, we got very creative, I think, keeping in mind we had to come up with 17 parking spaces. So trying to balance, how are we going to fit 17 parking spaces, and how are we going to meet, how are we going to meet code? We got creative. You'll see there's actually a parking spot in the middle of this landscaping up here. And now believe we have satisfied that 15-foot setback requirement, or at least the intent. So the variance has now been narrowed its scope. The variance for landscaping tonight is just asking you, which is supported by master plan policies and is supported by staff, is to count the parkway as part of the 15 feet. So the landscaping along the sidewalk would be counted, is counted, is contemplated to be counted in the master plan policies. So we have landscaping here, there's the sidewalk, and then added that additional 10 feet there. So again, in the recent memo that staff sent out yesterday, they are supporting this narrow, narrow landscape variance, given we were very creative in getting 17 spaces in landscaping. And finally, the variance for off-street parking, given that there's no real viable alternative to existing parking demands on the site, this would allow off-site parking, allow Snow's parishioners, folks at the school to park there. Again, the intent is to get parking and get cars out of the neighborhoods, get them onto the parking lot. So we believe the off-street parking variance should be approved tonight. Staff is recommending approval, and we believe that it's mitigated by the landscape buffers and privacy wall. So back to the site plan, so let's walk through it. So currently, let me get that straight for you guys. So here's the existing lot. Currently, there's a wall along the western boundary and a wall along the southern boundary. That was a condition of the variance from 2002 to do the existing parking lot to screen and buffer the residential development. What we're proposing is to knock down the center wall and elongate the wall that goes along the west side. So no real change in circumstances to property owners on the west, they'll have the same stucco brick wall that was, that's currently there. As far as the south, this is owned by, this parcel's owned by Our Lady, the Diocese. Instead of a wall there, we're proposing landscaping. And very dense landscaping compliant with code has to be eight feet. The reason why you have to have landscaping there is you can't have headlights shooting in to residential buildings and residential uses. So we have the ability and the option, and given we own this property and consent, to doing more dense landscaping along there. Another, I think, benefit to this plan is, in the context of Lander, we've heard a lot of testimony about, you know, cluster of cars along Walker and congestion along Walker. So we've closed that access point and put additional landscaping in there. So you'll enter right and exit right. I think that really completes my presentation. I'm here for any questions. Like I said, in the original drafts of the staff report, there were some recommendations for denial. I think we've worked really hard to get where we are today, and staff is now recommending approval of the use permit and the two variances. So I'm here for questions, so is the principal, so is the school board. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time, and Commission, thank you for your time as well.
Thank you, Garrett. Claudia, are you handling this for the city?
Good evening, Claudia Hansen, planning and engineering manager. Before you tonight are the requests for the special use permit and the variances. Not before you tonight are the abandonment or the parking agreement associated with the abandonment. So we would ask that you focus your attention on the findings for the special use permit and the variances. That was my housekeeping. Can you zoom in, please, Michelle? Thank you. I did provide a memo this afternoon and this evening clarifying a few issues. One, I think actually Mr. Garrett has One, I think, actually, Mr. Garrett has addressed them. Condition nine, it was an early version of the condition nine of the abandonment, so you have the, the actual adopted version of condition nine before you and in the memo. As described by the applicant's representative, the, they did withdraw the lighting variance, so that is no longer an issue, you no longer need to consider that request. And with the revised parking space location moving, there was another one up here, it was moved to the rear, they do meet the intent. Master plan policy, CD-21, does support a reduction in front yard landscaping if the parkway is landscaped. So that is supported by the master plan to reduce that. You will see that in the existing parking lot, there's a five-foot landscape area in the front, and in this one, it is 10-foot, that's because they're different zoning districts. So just to clarify there, it is, it is wider on this one, that's not, that's not your imagination, it is wider in this area, and that's because the, the underlying zoning does require a wider zoning in this zoning, wider landscape area in this zoning district. With the proposed, oh, and also on the, one other concern we had was with locating the parking space in the back, does that reduce their overall requirement on parking regarding, regarding percentage? They are still over on parking, on landscaping, sorry. On overall, it's, they're 21 percent, requirement is 20 percent, so they still meet their overall landscaping requirement. It's just the setback in the front. With these changes, staff can now make all the findings, and we do support the special use permit and the variances. And I am available for questions, as is Bill Gall, with any traffic questions.
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item and have not filled out a request to speak form, please do so with the secretary down here. We're going to open this public hearing with Teresa Hunsaker, 1019 Lander Street. You wish to make a statement?
Teresa Hunsaker, I, it's been kind of frustrating because every time we come to these meetings, it's only a piece of it, and I don't know how to get it so that we can discuss everything as a whole going forward. But since we're here to discuss this, I just was out in the neighborhood on Tuesday of last week, so I kind of wanted to show some pictures, and I don't know if it'll show up. That's the parking lot right now, and that night, it was really full. And so, I just wanted to show that there was that, and I wanted to show you Wright Street because my concern is, but we've started with this whole abandonment, that was the safety issue, and this is the Wright, sorry. Sorry. The Wright Street. And the Wright Street is really small, and I don't know if you can see it, but on there, there really is only one, one car to go through. And through our neighborhood meetings, we've discussed having the dropping off zone on that Wright Street as well. My concern would be this, that you're putting more traffic onto Wright Street. So I would, my concern is maybe making it a one-way street that way, because there really isn't. When I drive down Wright Street and if they abandon that, that would be where we would be going, is to make that like, because it's a pretty narrow street, you have to, if there's cars parked on both sides, if someone's coming, they have to pull over to let you through. So that would be my concern with that, with the Wright Street thing. And also, my other issue, which has been issue of many of the neighbors, is the fact that, well, I have the pictures, but anyway, is that they park on the neighborhood, they still, I mean, this meeting, I don't know what it was, but anyway, using that, I think that, and I am with them, that as far as a parking lot, this is a good solution, in the fact that if they have to tear down a house, my other, and the neighborhood's problems are, is if you keep tearing down houses, and we would like to see, you know, historical housing stay put, and I don't know a way to do that. But when we did bring that up at our neighborhood meeting, to see that the, the neighborhood thing, and planning in the future, that we can keep those historical things there. Also, they have that whole thing with the park, and there was, and I have a picture, there's only a few parking spots in the park, but yet they were all down Lander Street. And I don't know if there's a way that we can get it zone residential so that the residents feel like they have their parking spots and then the church can have theirs. I don't know if there's a way to do that. I would talk to some of the outgoing city council members about that, but they're gone. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Diane Stack, I think, 364 West Pueblo? Diane? Says you wish to make a statement in opposition.
I did, but I'm not prepared to specifically talk about the parking. I, I would.
You, you have to, okay. So you don't wish to speak, but you're in opposite. Okay. Thank you. Stephen B. Rubin, 364 Pueblo Street?
I have no statement, I'm just in opposition.
Okay, I will read this. "The real goals to make a campus are unstated?"
Yes.
Okay. For the record, that was Stephen Rubin's comment. Elizabeth Brahman, 2130 Lander Street. You didn't check that you wished to make a statement, but you're coming down, so.
I didn't? I thought I put opposition with a question mark?
You just said you're in opposition. No, no, you have your three minutes, come on.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Elizabeth Brahman, I own, I live on 2130 Lander, which is the south end of Lander, next to Urban. I also own the beautiful historic Rock House, which faces the new addition that was added by OLS.
Could you please address the comments to the commission?
I'm sorry, you're right. Okay. I am not entirely in opposition. And with all due respect to our planning manager, Hanson, this is a much bigger picture, and we are talking about a variance and a special use permit right now. I think the idea of using the property for parking is actually a good idea. However, our biggest concern, and mine as an adjacent neighbor, is that we are going to cut off, that we are creating a campus, just like what he said. So in terms of using that space for parking, I think that was a very good solution in what they're asking. If Lander stays available to parking, it's not such a big deal. I do, I'm very concerned about them releasing the lighting requirement. I think there can be very low, as the gentleman from the Cadillac dealership said, there's lighting that can be put in, it's very dark around there, maybe not spotlights, but I think there's lighting that can be created that's low lit, maybe ground lighting that would help to light the area because there are many old parishioners. My stepmother, who was a very well-known parishioner. And also, I think that we should, they're using the public streets for drop-off zones. That was an agreement, and I think they've worked very hard to try to find some flow. Principal Fuch is out there helping manage this, but it's on the public thoroughfares. I believe that if they're going to get this variance, they should be willing to allow the public to park in these lots, too. Mr. Gordon's also stated in our meeting last week at OLS, when he went over the parking agreement and also the lot, that if they get the abandonment of the east side, which they say they will go for and would like to purchase that from the city, all bets are off for parking, so we're kind of back to square one. No matter what, we believe that we should have public access to the two lots that they have. That being said, as an alternative, I think they've done a pretty good job with that. So, the biggest concern we have is that it is a neighborhood, we want it to maintain a neighborhood. One of the reasons I bought my property, because I went to Billinghurst, was that it was next to Snow's, which was a wonderful neighborhood parish. And we would like to keep good feelings. As you know, it's been cantankerous between the neighborhood and the church, and we can work together for that. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Christopher Hill, wish to make a statement in opposition. Please identify yourself, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you, Christopher Hill. I live directly across the street from Snow's, and contrast to Ms. Hanson, I really do think that it is the larger picture here. Our Lady of the Snow's unaccountably was not required to provide onsite parking in place of the loss of Lander Street. The assensible replacement, much of which was existing public parking already, is routinely ignored by school parents and churchgoers as they have moved instead onto closer neighborhood streets, as forewarned by the Reno Police Department evaluation of closing Lander Street. Who can believe that these same people will use tiny Wright Street, already, excuse me, congested, to access tight, parallel parking that makes unloading children and churchgoers difficult? They won't. They'll continue impinge on the neighborhood's parking instead, and this will only accelerate as their expansion proceeds. Which brings us to the broader point. In 1998, during the last attempt by OLS to get the Lander Street block abandoned, various OLS functionaries, right up to those directly representing Bishop Starling, unabashedly used phrases like "landlocked," "expand its physical size," and "accommodate more students." That application encountered staff recommendations against, in part due to a judgment that it was inappropriate for the neighborhood, but also because planning and Parks and Rec felt it lacked detail preventing full evaluation for a plot planning process. Snow's owns most of the property on the west side of 1100 Block Wright Street and is high bidding on the last parcel there. They have admitted plans to buy the east half of an abandoned Lander Street, and Parks and Recs has disclosed no other ideas for it. 1100 Wright, the street itself, is then theirs by uncontestable abandonment proceedings, and the church school has then cleaved the Plumas Neighborhood in half. No passage at all. Through all of the incremental moves towards this land grab, they have steadfastly refused to admit that there was any future plan at all, which is ridiculous. And yet, in contrast to 1998, there has been no requirement that OLS provide transparency about where they plan to go before planning even considers approving their requests. What does planning mean if not the evaluation of comprehensive information on the subject at hand? The variances here requested are for yet more changes incongruent with a peaceful residential neighborhood. But why to agree to even consideration of one more small bite out of neighbor rights without asking, "What is the whole plan? The real plan?" Any approval that is simply an acquiescence to accumulated momentum is an abdication of the planning process. Yet, any hesitation that has occurred in this rush to acquire has been met with, "We've got to get this done." Really? Why? Proper planning doesn't ignore facts that have yet to be presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Boyle?
Chris Hill has just stated pretty precisely what I'd like to say, but better than I could have said. Long time.
Thank you. Billy Andrews, wish to make a statement? You have three minutes, please identify yourself.
Okay, thank you. My name is Billy Andrews. I have the handout that we were given at the Snow's meeting exactly one week ago. This has been stated before, it's not just one little issue of the parking lot, it's an issue that's tied to several things. But the point, or request I would like to make, or the point I would like to make, is since we are losing, with the abandonment, half of the parking was lost, that's why Snow's has to make the additional 17 spaces, and they restriped Walker Street to make more spaces to make up for the parking that was lost by the city giving them half, the west half of Lander Street. Mr. Gordon has said time and again that this new parking lot that they're putting in will not be open to the public, so that to ensure that there is parking always open to the public, I would like a condition of this whole agreement to be that the east side of Lander Street become city property in perpetuity, and that Snow's cannot have, the city will never put it up for sale, because Snow's has said that if it is put up for sale by the city, they will buy it, and all the other agreements are null and void, which means we leave, we lose all that section of Lander Street, all of the parking, and it would impact the neighborhood significantly because it would do away with so much parking for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Levatter, wish to make a statement? Please identify yourself for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Ted Levatter. It is important to remember tonight that this whole project started more than a year ago when OLS raised some concerns about child safety for the children attending their school. They approached the city and suggested that their concerns for their children could be alleviated with the abandonment of just the west half of Lander Street. The city responded and said, "We can abandon the west half of Lander Street based on the ten conditions, part of which we're here to deal with tonight." The conflict that has arisen over the last year doesn't have to do with protecting child safety. The conflict came up when neighbors began to look at the project and proposal from OLS, and they didn't just see additional procedures for increasing child safety, what they saw was an attempt by OLS to increase their sphere of influence in our little neighborhood of Old Southwest. The action you have before you tonight, the demolition of a single-family residence and the addition of the parking lot, is part of that move to increase the sphere of influence. Some of you may remember, I attended a planning commission meeting on October 6th and gave a brief public comment. I showed a map of OLS's master plan from 2000, I believe it was 2003, and told you that OLS would be here in the future to talk about demolition of a house on Wright Street. Now that was, of course, before that information was available to the city. What is really important for you to realize is that is, this is part of a much bigger picture, and that bigger picture is important for you to keep in mind when you're deliberating tonight. The other important thing for you to remember tonight is that this area is protected by special planning, the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, and I would ask you, do you have the Plumas Neighborhood Plan in front of you this evening? Has staff mentioned the part of the Plumas Neighborhood Plan that is pertinent to the discussion we're having tonight? You, as decision-makers in this community, are to use the elements of the master plan to guide your decision. The master plan is the best chance we have of achieving the lifestyle desired by the majority of our residents. The Plumas Neighborhood Plan was established through a significant public process, and yet I find that throughout this process, I have fought many, many times to ensure over the many, many meetings that I have attended along with Garrett Gordon, that the Plumas Neighborhood Plan be given to decision-makers so that they could use the provisions of that plan in their deliberations. Once again, I have the sinking feeling that you guys have not been provided with the pertinent elements of that plan to help shape and guide your decision. With that in mind, I would ask that you ask OLS to come back when you've had a chance to review the Plumas Neighborhood Plan. The last comment I'd like to make is this. When the conditions for abandonment were conceived, the idea was that we'd be losing 17 parking places on Lander Street. The newest conception of the parking agreement states that we will not be losing 17 parking places on Lander Street. So there is no hardship that OLS has to fulfill in order to get the special use permit. We're not losing 17 parking places anymore, why do we need to replace 17 parking places? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Last chance, speak now or forever hold your peace. Hearing and seeing none. I'm going to close that portion of the hearing, bring it back to the board for questions. Who would like to get this ball started? Commissioner Stapleton?
I'll start with a technical question for staff. Two technical questions. Number one, I'm trying to understand the special use permit. And I meant to ask you guys this today or yesterday, because this is sort of an involved question, I'm trying to understand the staff report and how this works. So, the zoning on this parcel is MF-14.
Correct.
And is a parking lot an allowed use in MF-14 or in the Plumas Neighborhood Plan?
A standalone parking lot would not be, just if someone just wanted to go build one for some reason, like if the city wanted to go in and put in a public parking lot with meters, that would not be allowed.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, that's why I'm asking.
Right. In this case, it's considered the overall church facility, so it's looking at an expansion In this case, it's considered the overall church facility, so it's looking at an expansion of that. We've got the church and the school, the church and school across the street that we have their parking lot adjacent to this one. And so, this is an, and that's part of the overall facility, so this is an expansion of that, which triggers a special use permit because it's non-residential adjacent to residential zone property.
But how, that's what I was trying to figure out. How does that work technically if it's a separate parcel? If it was an expansion, wouldn't it have to be like, what do you call that? Reversal to acreage, or where it's, you know, so just because it's owned by the same entity, how does that make it part of the same parcel or use that is existing around it? It's a separately, I mean, it's a separate parcel with a separate, you know, land use assigned to it.
Well, it's, it will serve, sorry, it serves the, I'm not sure why that's not registering. There we go. It serves the church and the school. So, this, sorry. That's better. This is the existing parking lot that's right there. That's already there. That's a portion, that's a part of the church and school facility, and that was built a number of years ago as a portion of the church and school facility. This is looking at expanding that use. Churches and schools are allowed in MF-14, PF, and pretty much any zoning district. So, they are allowed in both of these zoning districts with a special use permit for residential adjacency and to expand that use.
So, you're saying that this use is not a parking lot, this is a school facility?
Church and school.
But it's not zoned, it's zoned MF-14, it's not zoned as a church or school?
MF-14 allows for churches and schools.
Okay, so you're saying this use...
With the special use permit.
So, you're saying the use, okay, so what they're asking for is not for a parking lot, they're asking for a church or school. So, that's why this isn't allowed use on this?
Correct.
You guys, as planning staff, how you guys are viewing this as...
Correct, it's part of that facility. If it were, like I said, if it was a public parking lot with meters, or if somebody was opening it up for, to serve a commercial use on Arlington for off-site parking, that's going to be a different situation. This is a part of the overall church and school facility.
Okay, because a business couldn't do this, expand the use into an adjacent parcel. It's because it's a church or a school that you're not viewing it as a...
Which is allowed in MF-14 with a special use permit.
Okay.
There's very few, I hesitate to say that a business couldn't do it, there's, I don't, I don't know if there's any businesses, other businesses that would be allowed in MF-14. If they were, it would go into the same situation. So, like a preschool would be allowed, and it would go into the same situation, like a privately-held preschool.
So, the use is not parking lot, the use is school. That's why...
Church and school.
That's why this isn't allowed use without a zoning change or variance or whatever you would need to put a parking lot in the Plumas Neighborhood Plan.
Correct.
Okay, next question is, oh, so, the, in terms of the variance for the landscaping, what is, you guys can make the finding for that, and one of the findings is that there has to be a physical hardship. What is the hardship? What's the extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition besides the fact that they need seventeen spaces?
I would say the, it's, I'm going to go with master plan.
Just because I know this is, you know, I mean, the last case that we heard, you know, there was specific geographical limitations on the site that warranted the variance. So, I'm just wondering, what's you guys' interpretation of what the hardship is for us to be able to make this finding?
Of what the hardship is? So, we're looking at, should be consistent with my staff report. Looking at being consistent with the surrounding area, the unusual situation in that it functions as a number of parcels that function as one facility. We've got the PF zoning to the north, which requires the five-foot setback trying to transition into that area to match the overall design, to make it function as one parking lot. If you've got, if you're going to have different standards on different zoning districts, on adjacent parcels, it's going to appear awkward in that area. I would say matching the landscape, it doesn't match, it exceeds it, but matching that area of the existing landscaping on the existing parking lot is what we're trying to achieve. And so, I would say the inconsistency of zoning in the area...
But the hardship can't be from something that was existing, built.
I'm sorry?
But the hardship can't be from something that was built by the applicant.
Built on the same parcel, is how that's worded.
So, it's a separate parcel in this instance, but not in terms of the use?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, that's, okay, I, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Kaufman?
This parking lot, Claudia, is, you know, we've heard that it's a private, not for public. I mean, when it's not being used during the school, nobody parked there, or...
I would defer that to the applicant. It's their application.
Okay, but I have one other thing. Okay, I'll get the applicant.
What was your question, Commissioner? Make sure I understood it.
It was, a private parking lot, nobody else can park there, there'll be signs or whatever of...
Sure, so currently, the existing parking lot is private. The expansion would be private, but just to explain, this is part of the, you know, expansion of the school and the church, and this parking would be designated for that use. A little bit of background, and not to go back to the abandonment, but part of the intent of where this condition came from was, the property line is right here for the southern, for the eastern boundary of Snow's. So, technically, this parking is on Snow's's property. So, part of the conversation that went on at City Council and, you know, with staff and where we're going to relocate this is, okay, this parking is being lost, we've got to put it someplace else, we're proposing to put it in this lot, with the ultimate idea of getting parishioners and school folks out of the neighborhoods. So, the argument is, and I think the intent behind this condition, was to get folks out of the neighborhoods into a parking lot close by to alleviate some of the congestion and parking in front of homes.
Okay, so, on Lander Street there, so, is that, you can leave this, leave that up, if you would, please. So, none of those parking lots exist today? Is that what you're telling me?
I am not, no. I'm saying when we went through the...
They still exist, but that's just an abandoned public street.
No, and, you know, it's certainly a very kind of complex situation on Lander of the ten conditions, where we are, what it's going to look like today, what it's going to look like tomorrow. So, I would, the reason why I brought up the condition is just to say why we're here tonight is to come up with seventeen parking spaces. And so, I think, as we described a minute ago, the use permits required in order to expand the campus, if we wanted to let it be open for parking, that would be a whole different use, as Ms. Hanson described, a whole different land use process. I'm sure indemnifications and hold harmless with the city, someone got hurt in the parking lot, Snow's couldn't be sued, so I think it raises the merit of legal issues rather than just expand the existing parking lot and keeping it private.
Okay, so, the question still is, if we approve this or don't approve it, will those parking places on Lander Street still be there as we see it in your photograph?
It depends. And the reason why I say that is, so, part of the conditions of approval for Lander, and now we're kind of digressing, but this is important to you, is that we have to put together a parking agreement. And that parking agreement includes, once Lander's abandoned, right, here's the blue line down this, down the center of the current public portion of Lander. If we satisfy our ten conditions of approval, this half of the road goes to the park, this portion of the road goes to Snow's, okay? So, the idea of the parking agreement was to have Lander closed during school hours and for child safety, no vehicles in there, but the parking agreement's going to contemplate, and you saw some drafts up here tonight, that it's going to be open during non-school hours and open during holidays and weekends. So, and I'm sorry if it prolonged the description, but to answer your question, so, no, the parking won't be available during school hours, but yes, the parking and access will be available during non-school hours, weekends, and holidays. Believe the intent of council was to say, "Well, because you're losing some parking during school hours, we need to mitigate that and move that to other locations." And so, the idea was to move it to this location.
Okay. Go ahead, Claudia.
If I can expand on that, please. Your decision tonight does not affect that parking.
No, I understand.
So, and I don't know if that question ever got answered. You should be looking at the findings as it relates to this, not as it relates to the abandonment. The fact that this is a condition for them to find seventeen parking spaces, but that shouldn't be in your consideration. You should be considering whether this is an appropriate development for the site.
Okay, should I be consider, have consideration for where drop-off and, you know, of children then? That shouldn't be part of the consideration?
That's not part of this application.
Okay.
This application is the appropriateness of the development of this site as a parking lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wiskey?
If I can kind of piggyback on Commissioner Kaufman's questions, this would be for staff. The space, the spaces that were, the property that we're looking at on Wright Street is for a specific number of property, of parking spaces. Is Snow's under, Our Lady of Snow's property, underparked or overparked for their use? Do you know? Do they need these seventeen spaces to meet code?
If they were to tear it on everything and start over again, they would be underparked.
Okay.
This brings them closer into conformance.
And so, these seventeen spaces are just as a benefit to their church, their parishioners, their school, their users, whomever, as providing in another additional seventeen spaces so people don't have to park on the street anywhere else around the property once the property parking is full?
That's true. We've had a number of comments, complaints, issues raised, that there is, there are issues in the area with drop-off for the school, Sunday mornings, holy days, whatever other days, that there may be a lot of vehicles in the area. This gives an area, this expands the parking facility for the church and school, so it gives them additional off-street parking, which would alleviate some of the congestion on the streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Woosley?
Question for Claudia. I'd like to know a little bit more about the Plumas Neighborhood Plan and how that does protect the neighborhood, and just in summary of that plan.
Mr. Levatter did comment on the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, and I did, or in the staff report, it was referenced, a couple of sections in there. The residential seven to twenty-one dwelling units per acre portion, that's the land use designation within the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, which is the area that this is located in, that says, "Land use policy shall determine appropriate density within this range for given piece of property. Non-residential uses such as group homes, fitness centers, private clubs, churches, and schools, and parks may also be appropriate." So, it's saying that this type of use is appropriate with, could be appropriate within this designation. Also, regarding parking, it states that most of the streets in the neighborhood provide on-street parking for the adjacent residences and business uses. This neighborhood was built prior to the city's parking ordinance, and as a result, there are a number of current land uses in the neighborhood which have a pre-existing lack of on-street parking. So, it recognizes that there's a number of uses in the area that don't have the parking requirement. This was built, I think, the church in 1940 and the school in 1950, something like that, approximately that, which would be well before an established parking ordinance. Permitting, zoning was kind of questionable back, questionable back then, it was probably done under the building permit process at that point, under county or probably the city, combination of the two at that time, but there were most likely no parking requirements back then, which is why they're underparked at this time. There's also discussion in the Plumas Neighborhood Plan regarding a park design for Plumas Park. It was a, it's a conceptual plan, it was never approved, it was put in there as a concept to be reviewed. I've reviewed that plan with the Parks Department, and they said that that conceptual plan is not realistic to develop due to current slopes in the area, and that's been another issue that's come up, is that park design. But Parks has looked at that, and the accessory advisory board has looked at it and said that it's not realistic to develop that plan, that park plan for the Plumas Park.
Thank you. The current parcel in question, is that right now a single-family residence?
Yes.
How long has that been zoned MF-14?
A very long time.
A very long time?
Yes.
That's what you're, yes, okay.
Decades, I would say.
Okay, so, not within the last ten years?
No, I don't believe so. I don't think, I don't think it's changed zoning districts. Plumas Plan's been in place since the late eighties, and it was established in that land use district at that time, so between seven and twenty-one at that time, and now it's at fourteen.
And do you know how long the church has owned that property?
Since the forties, I believe.
The current...
Oh, I'm sorry, this parcel, this property?
This parcel, yes.
The principal is saying three to four years.
And last question, what other properties in this area are zoned MF-14? I'm just trying to get a feel of, when you go, when you transition from the multifamily to a single-family?
Most of the neighborhood is MF-14.
Is it?
So, the park is public facility, the church and school are MF-14 and MF-30. The existing parking lot is PF, this site is MF-14, the corner parcel and a half are MF-30. We've got MF-30 to the south, MF-14 to the north, so mostly MF-14 and MF-30.
Perfect, thank you, that answers my question.
So, this and denser.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I just want to piggyback on that and follow up. Can you put that, thanks?
Sure.
Still trying to figure out from my first question, so if the first parking lot had to be zoned public facility, how come this parking lot isn't asked to, how come we aren't making this a public facility? How are we allowed to just, if it's a separate parcel, just make it into parking without any sort of a, you know, SUP or whatever would be allowed to change that MF-14 into park, whatever would be the zoning designation for parking? I know you already answered this, but just now seeing this and seeing that the adjacent is public facility, it makes even less sense to me.
Okay, and then, switching to public facility, it does open it up to quite a few more uses than MF-14. MF-14 actually protects the surrounding neighborhood more by keeping it MF-14. If you go PF, it introduces, when you do a zone change, you have to look at all the allowed uses. You can't just do the zone change and think it's just going to be a parking lot, or it's just going to be a school. It opens it up to a wide range of land uses. Keeping it MF-14 allows the residential use to continue, or a few minor commercial uses that I listed earlier, the daycare...
But you said, but you said MF-14, under the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, it wouldn't be allowed to be a parking lot? Just this parcel by itself?
Correct. You were asking, why didn't we switch it to PF?
Well...
I thought, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
I mean, whatever you switch it to, the question is, if that's not also zoned PF, how can it be an allowed use to put a parking lot there if you're not allowed to have a parking lot on something that's zoned MF-14? parking lot on something that's zoned MF fourteen in the Plumas Neighborhood Plan? I guess, I'm just not understanding why it's not being treated as a separate parcel, you know, and why we don't, don't have to have a, I, I just, it's, okay, I'm cool.
I'm sorry, I'm not following your question.
Okay, it's okay.
Commissioner Lark?
Well, I'm going through this line by line, trying to figure out if there's a finding that I can't find. And the only one that I see that's a problem, besides what Commissioner Stapleton is saying, and I mean, I just don't think we have, we don't have the ma-, we don't have the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, so, so we can't even look at that. For me, it's the traffic. I mean, that, that, just looking at all of this, scale, intensity, density, height, layout, architectural design, the whole thing, to me, is the traffic. I mean, that's a hairy little section of the world right there. And I kind of like the idea of making it a one-way. I mean, I don't know, can you tell us a little bit about traffic and what's going on with the traffic?
For the record, Bill Goss, Senior Civil Engineer. Um, the parking lot, like I said, increases parking of seventeen spaces. Potentially, you would, um, because there's more secured spaces, you would probably lose some of the spaces on, on Wright Street. Some of the people would utilize the parking lot as opposed to Wright Street as well, which might provide you with a little more, um, security there, less, less parallel parking on Wright. Wright is, it's narrow. It, it does meet the width minimums for parallel parking, two-way traffic. Potential for one-way, it can be requested. I've talked to, um, Public Works, our traffic engineer was Steve Binnell. His concern specifically with making Wright a one-way street is that, uh, Monday through Friday, between seven-thirty and three-thirty, you, you have closed off Lander Street. You essentially have blocked any southbound traffic, um, going through that area from, from Wright to Monroe, um, without having, sending them out to Plumas or out to Arlington. That would be a concern, um, from our traffic division specifically. But you would, you've eliminated the access way onto Wright. You put it all on, on, I mean, on Walker, and it's on Wright. So, it, it's not a high-volume, um, street. It is narrow, um, trips are low, um, speeds are low. It should be, it should be a safe entrance and access.
So, one more, one follow-up question. So, what's the speed limit? Does anybody know the speed limit?
I don't believe it's posted, so it would be twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Okay, and then maybe fifteen? So, people are going slow enough where if someone was coming out of the parking lot, they're, they're gonna see him?
Yeah, and, and these, these accesses are very close to the north end of, of Wright, and it, and it's a stop condition there as well, so the speeds are very low.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wiskey.
Mr. Chairman, Bill, before you, sorry, get too far away. The island section between the ingress and egress drive-ais of the proposed parking layout in our Exhibit A, um, would that be, I mean, would that be painted red so there would be no parking allowed? Uh, thank you, Claudia, that's.
Absolutely, there, um, you would, there would be no parking, um, it's, you have.
And would there be parking between the, the curb and the, and, or I should say, Walker and the, and the first driveway?
It's ten feet from a driveway entrance, so, um, you're not gonna get any parking there until you're south of both, both driveway accesses.
Okay, so, so then, so there wouldn't be any parking from Walker Street to what is shown as the southernmost, uh, driveway approach?
Correct.
So, your line of sight would be very clear?
To be very good.
For entrance and exit. Okay, thank you.
Well, I have a question for Garrett. Wha-, what is Snow's gonna do, and let me preface this, the only way that's gonna create more on-street parking is if that lot is full. So, what is Snow's gonna do to make sure that that lot is used first before the, the eighteenth car would park somewhere on the street? But what's to guarantee that the first seventeen are gonna park in that lot to keep those spaces free?
Sheriff, for the record, Garrett Gordon. Well, as you saw the picture this evening from the existing parking lot, that existing parking lot stays very full, so I think parishioners and, um, folks from school on your, realize and are used to trying to park in that existing lot. The fact, that fact that if we're, if, if we're fortunate enough to have it expanded, I think folks will continue to identify it as a parking space and go there, but even further, we've tried to do a better job, Tim has as a principal, is using the newsletter, um, for, for the school, to identifying, um, neighborhood issues and updates. So, I think he'd notify in the newsletter, we have additional parking, please do that, that, that first. I'm also sitting down on a weekly basis now with Father Tony and Mike Quilce, head of the Development Department, and they as well are, um, even at the pulpit now, um, identifying issues, not only in church issues, but neighborhood issues, parking issues, congestion issues, to try to be a better neighbor. And that's something we've certainly learned in this process, is we're gonna try to be a better neighbor, and I think we've taken those steps to do that. So, hopefully that answers your question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the, so the answer is it'd be the policy of the church to fill, to keep that lot filled before any other spaces are used?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Woosley?
Uh, Garrett, can I have another question for you?
Yeah.
Am I to understand, right, that, that currently Wright is being used as a drop-off and pickup location for the school?
No.
Are you saying you, you don't think that happens, uh, right now?
My understanding is, and I don't have children there, so I can turn and talk to the principal, but my understanding is, for the most part, Walker and Monroe are used for drop-off and pickup, and we have what we think is a better pl-, a plan being implemented within the last couple months of, of how to do that. We did hear from neighbors that maybe to reduce the congestion on Walker and Monroe, maybe you do some drop-off on Wright as well. So, we're currently in negotiations with the city on, with this parking agreement that will go to City Council eventually of can we and should we, and, and if we do, what's the, um, impact of using Wright as drop-off and pickup? So, it, it's in the works.
And so, the idea of not closing Lander, that is not gonna be for any drop-off or pickup?
Correct.
Okay, and, and what traffic will be allowed? And there, any traffic during those, uh, during those hours?
On Wright or Lander?
On Lander.
Um, so, let me try to explain this, and sorry, we're kind of digressing off, I just gotta put on the record, right, this is not, this is a different issue, but for sake of.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me just a minute, but we're not talking about Lander Street tonight, and this parking lot does not affect Lander Street or what's taking place there.
And, and I'm getting an eye from legal. We need to stay focused on the issue before us.
I, I do think traffic is a finding in this area and parking, and I'm trying to figure out the flow around the school.
I agree. Commissioner Lark agrees.
Fair enough.
I'm happy to answer, you answered the question. I'm not, not trying to be difficult, just, um, so, to answer your question, which was how will Lander be used? So, in the event where we meet all ten conditions and it's abandoned, because it's currently not abandoned, so it's open, it's abandoned, then it will be closed during school hours and open during non-school hours, weekends, and holidays.
So, therefore, no traffic will be allowed whatsoever?
During school hours, no. During non-school hours, weekends, and holidays, parking on both sides of the street, access north and south.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Now's the time. Commissioner Stapleton?
Just following up on, on traffic, I have a question about pedestrian traffic, and, um, during school hours, are, are there gonna be any parents, is there gonna be? Well, maybe during church hours, too. How much traffic then pedestrian traffic, sort of what's the path? And, um, and when folks are parking in this lot, which would now be doubled, you know, how much additional pedestrian traffic does it put into, into Wright Street? And is there a plan? Does there need to be a plan, you know, for, and maybe this is a question for staff, but also for, for Garrett?
Yeah.
But also, maybe Bill can, after you.
I think that's a, a great question, and the, a plan. There is a plan. It's in the parking agreement, and part of it is gonna contemplate, um, a traffic guard system, right? We heard from the neighborhood, you know, why don't you have traffic guards? Well, we thought, well, having kids out there with flags, like, for, you know, causes liability concerns, but we're getting parents out there to do traffic guards. Um, Tim is out there personally with the yellow vest in the morning, down below and up above, trying to direct traffic. We have our head of security here, who's down, in there in the morning with vests on, trying to coordinate traffic. This will all be kind of the, the global agreement, and the global plan is in the works. We're working with all departments of the city of Reno, us as the applicant, as the user, and eventually that'll go up to City Council for approval of a concise, good plan that works for the area.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does Bill, can you just tell me real quick, is, is, you know, we talk about traffic and impacts and traffic plans, is, does the city have similar requirements in terms of pedestrian traffic, and if so, what triggers that, and what are they?
Um, yeah, when we see an issue with increased traffic, you know, pedestrian traffic, we might ask for, you know, um, something on that. In this case, I mean, we're, we're adding, you know, we're basically doubling the size of this parking lot, um, here, for the most part. Obviously, their access is directly to sidewalks, it would come up to the intersection here, you got a stop control situation, and safe, you know, um, access across the street there. I don't, don't see it as being a large, um, increase or, or concern in traffic, there is a fairly, and Wright, again, as we mentioned before, it's, it's a low, low speed, it's got a stop control at the, at the north end, and it's, it's fairly narrow street, so, um, traffic, you know, pedestrian access across Wright is, is pretty clean.
Any further questions? Comments? Motion? Comments? Commissioner Woosley?
Just a comment to the board, I, I'm struggling with this. I, I like the idea of providing more parking, which I think is sorely needed in this area. I, I applaud that. I think that's a great plan. I think this is a great facility, that, that adds a lot to our community. The opposite side of that would be that residents can continually come around and, and tell us about the parking issues, which this would help, and traffic. And I can't help but, you know, think are tearing down houses in the area to provide more parking the right answer, and I hate to see parking, uh, houses being torn down for that purpose. Can I make a lot of the findings? Do I wanna see continuing houses being torn down? No, to provide more parking. And, and that's what I'm struggling with.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I'll chime in on what I'm struggling with. Um, and, um, I was struggling with my conversation earlier with Claudia about the, the, the public facility designation and how we're, how we're doing this on this site, but I'll just leave that alone and assume it's something that I don't understand, so I'm fine with that, um, or not. I just, I'm, I'm, I'm over it. But the, the other finding that, um, specifically, that, that I am having trouble with is on the variance, and, um, in order for us to grant a variance, we have to make this finding that the property is characterized by an extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition, such as narrowness, shape, topographic conditions, et cetera. Um, I, I did ask, ask Claudia about, you know, how staff could make that finding, and I, I apologize, Claudia, I don't, I'm nitpicking, and I don't mean to take you to task, um, and, and, you know, I know, I also know how hard the applicants work trying to make this work, um, but specifically with the parking lot and the landscaping, um, specifically with the parking lot and the landscaping, uh, we are being asked to grant a variance on the, on the, on the amount of landscaping. And in order to grant that, we have to find that the property is characterized by a hardship, and I can't find a physical hardship. I, I didn't get a real clear answer from staff, and then, in the staff report, um, in the staff report that recommended denial, um, it says specifically that in regard, when, when they were recommending denial on this variance, it says there is no identifiable, identifiable physical hardship on the lot that would preclude the extension of landscaping. Meeting this requirement would likely result in the loss of one parking space. I mean, the hardship is, is that, you know, they want seventeen spaces, not sixteen, and, I mean, I, I get the situation, you know, and I, I know how hard you guys have worked on this plan, but to me, that's important. That finding for variances is really important, and in the, the last case that we heard, um, about the industrial lot, you know, we were asked to look at three variances, and every one of those, there was clearly a geographic or top, you know, a, a physical constraint. And then there was a, you know, um, there was mitigation, you know, done to meet that, which meant the intent, met the intent then of the master plan, so I'm struggling with that one, and I just, I feel like that, that finding is important for us, and so, that's where I'm at with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wiskey.
Maybe I can add, um, clarify something for Commissioner Stapleton, and, and that is, um, Claudia said that they're required, landscaping percentage is twenty-one percent, and they have twenty-one percent, so they actually have more landscaping than the minimum requirement? And if I'm wrong, Claudia, would you please stand up and correct me?
I guess I shouldn't stand up then, because I'm not correcting you. That is correct. Um, but also, it's, um, we're looking at the, the overall area also. We've got the PF zone, which we talked about, which only has the ten-foot. We've got the, um, this one is MF fourteen, which has the fifteen-foot, but the master plan actually encourages to include the five-feet of parkway. So, we have the master plan encouraging exactly what they're doing. So, we've got the five-feet of landscaped parkway, and it encourages to keep the landscaped parkway, and it's, in the master plan, it says where there is a landscaped five-foot parkway, you should decrease the setback. So, it's, it's, it's almost a conflict there. Um, I would never want to say that it's an actual conflict, but, um, but it does, it is actually supported by the master plan to do exactly what they're proposing. Um, you can also look at it, they are reaching for the seventeen spaces, that's not what you're supposed to be considering, but going to Mr. Woosley's, um, comment, if they can't meet that seventeen, it almost encourages them to go further and take down the next house. So, looking at that, it, it's, it does squeeze, so it's.
That's not our, we can't make a decision based on that.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying, but it's, it's gonna go into what Mr. Woosley's comment was, to, to further expand the parking lot, which, which they could do, and then they wouldn't have the parking, the landscaping variance. So, just a couple of things you might wanna consider.
So, in, in the original proposal that, where you guys were recommending denial for the, um, landscaping, the variance on the landscaping, were they also proposing to do, to use the planning strip to meet the setback, the landscaping requirement?
I'm not sure, I don't think.
Is that new?
I don't think it was lands-, no, I don't think so at that time. I think they added that back in to meet that master plan policy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wiskey?
I'd like to offer a comment. When I look at this project, based upon its specifics, the variance and the special use permit, based upon our findings, not based upon what City Council has done on Lander Street or anywhere else in the neighborhood, based upon this one lot, I had a problem with this, and I could not make the, the findings, and I would have voted in denial of this project had they have not excluded the lighting and added lighting back into this. Um, I'm kind of disappointed, here's another project this evening, this kind of gets to, back to what I was saying earlier about incomplete drawings. I would like to know what kind of lighting is being proposed for this, or what Snow's thinks they can, can put in there, because it's, the light could definitely affect the neighbors surrounding this property. And yet, we don't, we don't have anything, and, and.
You could ask Claudia.
I, I could ask Claudia, and I, and I know that we have an ordinance that says there's X amount of foot candles of light allowed, um, to bleed over, over a property line. I think it's point-five foot candles. I don't remember it, how many feet, but I, I think that's, that's very, um, clear in ordinance. Go ahead, Claudia, if you wanna.
Since there is a special use permit for residential adjacency, the type of lighting is something that you can condition. So, if you wanted low ballyard lighting, or definitely not lights over eight feet tall, or whatever it is that you feel is appropriate, this would be an appropriate time to add in a condition to make sure it's not what you don't want, and it is what you do want.
Right, and, and maybe that's what Snow's wants us to do, because they offered nothing. And, and when an own, when a prop, when an applicant or an owner doesn't offer anything, then, I guess, we can dictate what we wanna do. I don't like to dictate, I don't like to solve the problems, I think the problem- I think the problems are supposed to be brought before us, but that's what I see with an 11th hour amendment coming in, and then, you know, we get a, and I'm kind of on my soapbox right now, but we get an eight-and-a-half by 11. Can any of you guys read this? I can't. I couldn't read when it was put up on the screen, because it was so fine in its printing that we, you know, there's detail in there, and I'm sure it's important, or somebody wouldn't have put it on there, but we don't have that detail, guys. And I'm disappointed in that again. That's my comment. The one-way street, I really like the idea of the one-way street, but I don't think that it's really in the best interest of the neighborhood to have a one-way street, because you're gonna block off their ability to travel in both directions at any given time and stay within their neighborhood. So I don't know that that's worth pursuing or not. I would like to hear from the other commissioners on what their thoughts on the one-way street are.
Well, I think that's out of the realm of what we're considering, my personal opinion. I'm looking at the project as it's presented, and I can make the findings. I mean, the end result is they own the lot, the house isn't a historic house, it's just a house. Private property, they have the right to do with it what they want. They get tear down, do nothing with it. They're benefiting the neighborhood by creating 17 more spaces. Forget about anything else that's going on around there right now. They're adding 17 parking spaces. So I don't see a downside to that. I mean, everything else can be argued at another time, in another day, but what we're looking at with this, in my opinion, does nothing but improve the condition in the neighborhood. It adds 17 spots that the church says it will be policy for them to fill up before all others, so I, you know, cutting through all of it, I can make the findings. I think it's an improvement for the area. Does anyone live in that house right now? Just, probably not.
Yes. I know. Commissioner Locke knows that from driving by.
So it'll go away, but again, no spaces, 17 more, all things equal, to me, that's a win for the neighborhood.
Commissioner Locke, I'd just like to make a comment. This is it, I promise. You know, I agree. I mean, you look at this and you can make the findings, but I have to say, I live in that neighborhood. I do. And those houses, they all mean a lot to me, whether it's not historical or whatever you want to say, and I hate to see them go down, you know? I just do. I've lived there for 13 years. I've walked that neighborhood. I mean, I know that park, my dog went there his whole life, and it's, you know, we're people up here, we care about the neighborhood, but at the same time, you know, they own the property, and I think it will be a good addition. I mean, it's a nice parking lot. It's, I mean, they're bending over backwards to make it nice, make it safe, but I would hate to see house after house after house become, you know, something that's not consistent with the historical and architectural designs of such, like, an amazing neighborhood, for what it's worth.
Anyone else? No more comment? No more discussion? Motion? Somebody? Commissioner Goff?
Rob Boni with City Attorney's Office. If you could make your motions on the variance and the issue piece, please. Thank you.
In the case of LDC 13-00041, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit to allow off-site parking subject to conditions with, I guess that's a variance, so, and I can make the findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Locke, seconds.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero.
In the case of LDC 1300041, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variances to allow the off-site parking and reduction to require front yard landscaping setback subject to conditions, and I can make those findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Locke, seconds.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. I cannot make finding B. I don't believe that the applicant showed hardship, undue hardship.
Is that the only nay?
Nay.
Two nays, same condition?
I cannot make the finding for the variance 1A.
Okay. Let the record show, the vote is five to two in favor. Good luck with your project. At this time, I'm going to read an appeal process. Any action taken by the Planning Commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person agreed by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must make his, hers, or its own appeal. Appeals must be followed with, filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the Planning Commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the Reno City Council with Planning Commission recommendations. Good luck with your project. Next item, TXT 13-00001, noise at residential property lines. We'll wait, Claudia.
Good evening once again. Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Tonight before you is a text amendment regarding noise at residential property lines. This was initiated by City Council quite a while ago, and, excuse me, what this does is currently in the code, we have the noise standard at the residential property line that you heard discussed earlier in the gaslight project tonight. That standard only applies adjacent to single-family zone property. This would include multifamily zone property. They're both residential, people live in both, so this just extends that protection to multifamily as well, and that is the extent of the ordinance.
Thank you, Claudia. Do we have any questions? Comments? Commissioner Olivas? Do we have a motion? Nope, no pressure. We're just all watching you very closely.
How do I say this? Case number TXT 13-00001, move to pass. Read it? I just read it?
Yeah. Proposed motion.
Based upon the compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend that the City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Olivas, his first, and a second by Commissioner Wieski. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations on your first motion.
Thank you.
Item nine, Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Who wishes to do that? Commissioner Bicka W.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wieski, we have a meeting coming up next week. Be the first meeting of 2013 midway through our year. I have no updates from the last meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieski. Staff announcements, item 10. Can you lump them all together, or do we have to go individually?
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. I'm gonna lump them all together, because all I have are the council actions to update you on. The MSFL, which is the UNR Farms Project, and McCarran Crossing were both continued to march for further review by City Council, and all of the other, we had quite a large agenda last time, all the other ones that went to council were approved. That included Olivera Montello Zone Change, the Northwest Gateway Zone Change, and the Charlotte PUD Change.
Beautiful. Hey, item 11, Commissioner's Suggestions for Future Agenda Items.
I'm sorry. Claudia, do you want to bring up the workshop?
Oh, the February 20th?
The February workshop on the 20th.
Do I want to?
Well, I didn't know if we need to remind them that we're having a workshop.
Yes, bring it up.
Okay, there's a workshop. I think everyone was present at the last meeting, but the meeting we talked, the workshop we talked about at our last meeting, it's still happening.
Okay. We'll get an email or something on that.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 12, Public Comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for the comment on individual action items, or individual action items contained on this agenda. Seeing no one left in chambers, I'm gonna close that public comment, and we are adjourned.